Excused Tierney, Verveer, Wood, Sellers. We have corn.
All right, we have corn, so I'll now entertain the suspension of rules by Vice President Carter.
Suspension of rules, 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinance, and 2.25 Resolutions for Items, so designated on the agenda.
All right, seconded. So we go to Agenda Item Number One, which is Honoring Resolution. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Yes. All right.
All right, moved and seconded. All right, discussions on Item Number One. Who's gonna read it? Is it Aldo McKinnon?
Thank you very much. I have the distinct honor to read on behalf of the Council and the Mayor's Office two resolutions. The first resolution honoring Connie Fair, Matt Fair, and Alec Lewis for their lifesaving efforts on August the 20th, 2018. Whereas on Monday, August the 20th, 2018, while riding their bikes surveying the damage caused by an extreme heavy rainstorm event, Connie and Matt Fair noticed a vehicle in a culvert near Chapel Hill and Regis Roads, and whereas Matt and resident Alec Lewis were able to rescue two of the passengers from the dangerous waters, Mary Geoff and Bruce Chapin, whereas the driver, James Sewell, tragically lost his life in the event. And whereas the mayor and common council joined the Fairs and Mr. Lewis in grieving the loss of James Sewell in that incident, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of the City of Madison and the Madison Common Council extend great gratitude to Connie Fair, Matt Fair, Alex Lewis for their selfless and heroic actions on August the 20th, 2018. Would Matt Fair, Connie Fair, and Alec Lewis please come forward?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
It's weird being on this side, but thank you. So, first of all, thank you to the common council and to the mayor, who is somewhere, for this award. Thank you so much. We are deeply gratified for this, although at least Connie and I accept it, to be honest, a bit reluctantly, to be honest with you. What we really, our main point we want to get across tonight is just gratitude to this wonderful community. It didn't take more than hours, really, when we started hearing from so many people in this community, reaching out and giving us their support, and their love, and their words of encouragement. It was overwhelming, and it still is overwhelming, as you're gonna see from me if I even get halfway through this speech, or this little talk, or whatever I'm doing here tonight. So, thank you. It just makes us more gratified than we already were to raise a family in such a loving and compassionate city. We're very happy that we're raising our kids. And speaking of that, I do want to introduce, I have my daughter Sophia, and my sons Owen and Garrett. You guys can raise your hands over there, who are here with us. Also, my mom and dad are here, Mary and Pat Fair. And Connie's parents are here, Ev and Lena Hansen are here as well. Thank you, of course, for your support. Thank you so much. But the support has been overwhelming, and the support also came from the city, officially from the City of Madison immediately as well, in a very formal way, but also in a very informal way. I can't tell you how many people I heard from both staff and from so many of you, to my colleagues, whether it was, you know, just words of encouragement. We heard, I shouldn't say "I," both of us heard, whether it was words of encouragement or support, or, you know, can we make you a meal? Some of you, it was, "Just shut up, we're making you a meal. Don't say it's too nice. It'll be in your doorstep by 6 o'clock." So, you know who you are, and thank you. We really appreciated that. We have a few people we would like to specifically recognize and make sure that we recognize tonight. First, to the first responders, some of them who are here tonight, and the fire and the police, the work that you do. You know, we did something on one night. You guys do it all the time. And the night that we were able to witness it, the professionalism that you showed, the dedication that you showed that night was amazing, not only over on Chapel Hill, but throughout the city that night. But we know that you do it on a consistent basis, day in and day out, and the community, maybe you don't always feel the thanks and the gratitude, but on behalf of the City Council and the city, we can certainly say thank you. Thank you for that. This is the hard part. I definitely want to recognize the family who's here with us. Rob Jim Sewell, they're right over here.
Would you ask them to stand, please?
Yes.
And join you there at the podium?
So, thank you so much for being here. We obviously, you know, the surreal part about this is that we wish we didn't have to be here, you know? And the reality is that had we been able to save your dad, we wouldn't be here. And we know that, and we understand that. And we wouldn't be seen as heroes, or whatever. But I guess if there is a silver lining, is that we have gotten to know you, and we now know what everybody else knew about your dad, because we've gotten to know how wonderful you are. And so, thank you for being so welcome, welcoming to us. And we look forward to tomorrow night and raising a glass at the Great Dane, so thank you. And then I just had, we have two more things to say. Well, three more things. One more person to recognize and family to recognize, and that's Alec, and Alec might have something to say. But, so this is Alec Lewis, and he was there that night as well, and we've gotten to know Alec and Alec's wife, and we've had dinner with him and his wife, and I think we're gonna be lifelong friends. And so, again, another silver lining in a moment when, you know, you didn't know that was gonna happen. So, thank you, Alec. People help each other all the time in this world. So, we did something, I guess, dramatic in a dramatic moment, but there are people out there who are helping each other in this community all the time. And I think we just need to remember that. Sometimes it's big and dramatic, and sometimes it's subtle, but those subtle little things that people do for each other are just as important. And so, we need to remember that. And then, the last thing is, and I said this on, in some of the interviews I gave, but shocking to no one, they didn't get on the air, and I'm gonna guess it's not gonna get on the air tonight if there's anybody here in the newspapers, but anyway. And that is that we were out in the community that night and happened to come across a terrible situation, and we tried to do what we could. But there are people who are not necessarily out in public. They might be behind their doors, or they might be out in public, but we don't know that they need help. There are so many people in our community who are living with pain, and who are living on the verge of crisis, or in crisis. And so, I just, I guess, if we have a message, it is that we reach out, and that we make sure that we're caring for our neighbors, and we're asking people how they're doing, and we're going that extra mile to help somebody out. Because that's, yes, that's what we did, and it got a lot of attention, but do those basic things that can actually be just as important as what we did. You just might not see it right away. So, again, thank you for this award. We really wish we weren't standing here before you tonight, to be honest, but we appreciate it anyway. Thank you.
Alec, you wanna make a statement?
Just take a brief moment. Matt said far more than I could ever say. And I just want to just honor Matt and Connie, two of the most humble people that you will ever meet. As I'm sure many of you know, we have so enjoyed getting to know them. If I may introduce my beautiful wife, Alyssa, married in July, so she's here with me, as well as my mother, Christina. Mom, would you stand up? I am so grateful. Matt honestly invited me to this, and I'm so grateful that you all saw fit for this recognition. It is odd, I think, to, as Matt said, to receive recognition for an event that, in a lot of ways, did seem, it's hard to see silver linings, but again, as Matt has said, there are many. And I think, you know, in a moment like that night, and in the days following, yeah, there are just some things that you're faced with that you go through most of your days, the rest of your life. You don't, you aren't faced with those kind of questions. But one of the prevailing questions that faces you in that moment is, what do you believe in, and where is your hope? And as I shared with Matt and Connie, I know that the comfort to me was that my hope is in Jesus Christ. And that is so encouraging to me and strengthening to me, that I have no fear in death, but I know that He holds the future. I know He holds the future for Matt and Connie and for their family. I do just want to honor Him tonight, too. So, thank you all so much for recognizing us, and it is very humbling to be here. We do very much appreciate it. So, thank you all very much.
Connie, you want to make a statement?
We made it together.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, we have...
Excuse me, can I just take just a moment, because I think that this is very important as well. Will the family of Mary Geoff, especially her daughter, would you come forward, please? If there is a family member from Bruce Chapin, would you come forward to, okay. Okay. Is Mary's daughter there?
Yeah.
Yeah, come forward, please. And the reason that I'm calling them forward is, is that as you take away the loss of Mr. Sewell, you also need to take away the joy of the people that you did serve. And so, they'd like to share something with you.
I get to go?
Yeah.
Um, hard to say what's going on here. It's hard to see if Jim is going on.
Can they talk into the mic?
It's been hard. But my daughter is helpful, and the friends we've made are helpful. And I just don't want to see it rain anymore, again. So, thank you for your help.
Yeah, just thank you for, Matt and Connie, for being there. I still get a mom to talk to and view it through all of this, so really appreciate it.
And I did that because I was told by Mr. Sewell's wife is that because of the actions of the Fairs and also Geoff, that a daughter had her mother. And I thought that that was very important to be shared tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's three registrations, supporting the resolution, not wishing to speak, Sarah Schut, Steve Holtzman, and Sarah Eskrich. I also just want to apologize for being late. I was dealing with an ICE item, and I hope that some way excuses my tardiness, but a big thank you to everyone who participated in the difficult events that evening. Further discussion on the resolution, seeing none on adoption. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed, no. Motion, opposed, no, not, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item two.
They didn't speak yet. Were they not wishing to speak?
They did not want to speak. They were just registering support, not wishing to speak.
All right.
So, we'll go to item number two, honoring the work and dedication of those involved in the recent and continuing flooding event.
I'll move item number two.
Is there a second? Motion is second. Who is going to read this? Go ahead, Aldo and Carter, if you want.
Thank you. Honoring the work and dedication of all those involved in the recent and continuing flooding events, and expressing the support and sympathy of the mayor and the common council to those directly affected by the devastating flood that occurred across the city on August 20th, 2018. Whereas a heavy rainstorm event brought severe and devastating flooding to the City of Madison and surrounding communities in Dane County on August 20th, 2018, and whereas the flooding of this magnitude has never been seen in the area before, with nearly 12 inches of rain leading to flash flooding on the city's west side, rising lake levels leading to sustained flooding on the Isthmus and in other areas of the city that have never experienced flood damage before. Whereas city workers have tackled this flooding challenge with great dedication, spending long hours to map the most vulnerable areas, provided pumps to keep areas of travel open when possible, monitored enclosed lanes of traffic to protect motorists, provided parking options for residents when needed, worked with staff, residents, and volunteers to fill and place roughly 250,000 sandbags, completed immediate repairs on infrastructure affected by the water, and provided important information to alders, residents, businesses, and commuters using multiple methods from going door-to-door, press releases, press conferences, offering phone conversation, emails, text messages, and other social media. And whereas, response to this flooding event has been a citywide effort relying upon employees from virtually every agency to ensure that our residents can travel safely in spite of rising water conditions. And whereas, employees from engineering, streets, parks, parks, forestry, park construction, mall, concourse, fleet services, parking enforcement, Madison Police Department, Madison Fire Department, Madison Fire Department, Madison Metro, Water Utility, Building Inspection, Information Technology, Parking Utilities, Finance Department, Risk Manager, Mayor's Office, and the Common Council deserve special recognition for their extraordinary efforts to keep our city running smoothly, joining continuing to this flood event. And now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council express his support and profound his sympathy for the victims of this devastating flood that occurred across the city and the county. And be it further resolved that the mayor and the common council convey their gratitude to the local, state, and federal official, National Guard, and emergency personnel who responded to the flooding and their continuing efforts to restore normalcy in the affected area. And be it further resolved that the City of Madison also thanks the many, many volunteers, charitable organizations, businesses, and individual donors, churches, religious organizations, for their generosity in this crisis. And be it finally resolved that the mayor and the common council commend the residents of the City of Madison for their unshakable spirit, and for the grace and generosity with which they have supported one another during the flooding and the continuing recovery efforts.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on the resolution. Seeing none on the question which is adoption. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item three. Pardon?
Wait, wait.
Aldo and Carter?
Well, I was just gonna stand up and give an applause.
On item, all right, are we on to item three, then?
Yes, that's just, I think, a referral.
Okay.
Item three, just a referral, but I think Aldo and Sarah want to move on item four. Is that what you want to do?
That's correct.
All right, go ahead, please.
Well, three...
Three is just a referral.
Three is just a, so I just want to get three out of the way, if you don't mind.
Okay, all right. So, I'll move referral of item number three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item four. No, well, we're at item four, but Aldo and Badar, did you want to take up another item now, before we go to four?
Yeah, I would like to ask that we move item number 50, which is the Kashiya House up on the agenda.
Motion to suspend the rules to take up item 50.
Second.
Is there a second? Motion is second. Can we hold on that motion for one moment? Do the consent agenda, get all that out of the way, so that those items are taken care of. So, is there any objection to tabling this item? So, we will table that motion. Aldo and Baldath, could we do the consent agenda, please?
Yes, so, consent agenda, yeah. All right, so, at this time, a consent agenda will be moved with recommended actions listed for each item except item number one. Items which have registrants wishing to speak. Number two, items which require an extra majority roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent. Number three, items which all the persons, all persons have separated out of discuss, out for discussions or debate purposes. So, the consent agenda is, agenda number 14, agenda number item four to eight are public hearing items. Legislative file number five to eight, seven zero, public hearing items, 2019 Executive Capital Budget. The consideration of overriding of mayoral veto. Item number 12, Legislative File Number Five to Four Nine Eight, new license for Laura Gardens LLC. The following items are extra majority items, extra majority items vote items will be recorded as unanimous vote unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Item number 29, Legislative File Number Five to Five Three Two, amending the 2018 adopted park division capital budget and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sales amendment between Charles P. Dyckman and Bonnie Dyckman and the City of Madison for the acquisition of 40 acres of vacant land located in the town of Verona, Dane County. This require 15 votes. Item number 31, Legislative File Number Five to Nine Five Two, amending the 2018 adopted budget, adopted engineering facility management capital budget for the Walter Street Restrooms building project. Item number 41, Legislative File Number Five Three Zero Zero Three, amending the 2018 adopted operating budget to appropriate $319,624.40 of CDA reserve funds for capital improvements at Parkside Apartments. Item number 43, Legislative File Number Five Three Zero Zero Seven, amending the 2018 adopted operating budget to appropriate $137,773 of CDA replacement reserve funds for capital improvement and repairs at Twux Park's redevelopment phase one. Agenda items part of the consent agenda with additional recommendations as noted. Note, the Finance Committee met on 9/24/2018. The following items contain the recommendations from that meeting. Item number 28, Legislative File Number Five Zero Seven Six Two, delete declassification of pedestrian bicycle coordinator in CG-18. Item number 33, Legislative File Number Five to Nine Five Seven, amending resolutions, enactment number RES-1800349, which arises the execution of a purchase and sale agreement between the City of Madison and the owner of the property located at 6444 Neffsbett Road for expansion of Reed Park, Apple Reed Park. Item number 34, Legislative File Number Five to Nine Eight Five, authorizing the mayor and the city clerks to enter into an agreement with the consultant team of AECOM-ETL for Phase One. Item number 35, Legislative File Number Five to Nine Eight Six, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an airspace lease with Meredith Hospital, Inc., to accommodate a skywalk connection connecting the two properties located at 202 South Park Street and 36 South Park Street. Item number 37, Legislative File Number Five to Nine Nine One, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a lease with Frameshift Arts Cafe Limited LLC, allowing for the use of the city-owned transportation corridor parcel located at 21 South Fourth Street for parking purposes. Item number 46, Legislative File Number Five Three Zero Three Five, authorizing a contract with Frank Production Concerts Limited LLC for first 2018, and authorizing a system of gating and ticketing for entry into the event area. Items placed on exclusion list, item number 50, Legislative File Number Five Three Zero Six Three, substitute amending the 2018 adopted operating budget to transfer $40,000 from the contingent reserve to the Community Development Division in order to fund and authorize a non-compete service contract with anesthesia therapy for the purpose of continuing mental health and community programming services in Madison's Monk community through the end of 2018. Those were the items. Mayor?
Thank you. So, is there, there is a second, yes. So, when we take this motion up, we will be acting on all of the recommendations on the agenda with the following exceptions. Four and five, which are public hearing items, 12, and we have a registered speaker on 48, and obviously 50. So, at this point, and six, seven, and eight are also public hearings, though there are no registrants. So, let me read those off again. Four, five, six, seven, eight, 12, 48, and 50. Are there any other items? Seeing none, then, on the question of adoption. Aldo and Badar, seal.
I just would like to be marked as recusing myself on item 35.
It'll be so noted. On the balance then, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's on about six, zero. Not very robust, but I'll accept it. Motion carries. And now, a motion to take item fifty off the table. Aldrin Bedar.
Do you want me to make the motion to take it off the table?
Take, yeah, fifty off the table.
Make a motion to take item number fifty off the table.
Thank you. Motion and a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, what was on the table was fifty with the move to suspend. On that motion, discussion, seeing none. On the motion to suspend, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Now would be appropriate to have a motion to adopt item fifty.
Move to adopt item number fifty.
Thank you. There is a second. We do have some registrations on this, including a few early registrations. Leilao Tao is first. And the next speaker would be May Lee Vang.
May, you wanna turn the lights for the mic so they can see?
I am here to talk about the life of Kashiya and the stress and the worryness of Kashiya for you to hear. I wanted to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. We are here as refugees, we have nowhere to turn to. You are here as leaders, we are here in your country, a prosper country, a country that are thoughtful, a country that are loving. We ask, and I ask again, for your support and for your help to make sure that we have a place. As citizens, whether you like, love us or not, we are your citizen, and I ask again for you to support us and give us a place to call home again. If things are to die, things are to happen, and the people will die, I will be the first one to die because we have no home again, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next registrant is May Lee Vang, who will be followed by Meitong Vang.
I wanted to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. We are here as refugees, we have nowhere to turn to. You are here as leaders, we are here in your country, a prosper country, a country that are thoughtful, a country that are loving. We ask, and I ask again, for your support and for your help to make sure that we have a place. As citizens, whether you like, love us or not, we are your citizen, and I ask again for you to support us and give us a place to call home again. If things are to die, things are to happen, and the people will die, I will be the first one to die because we have no home again, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next registrant is May Lee Vang, who will be followed by Meitong Vang.
I know translation doesn't do justice to everything that the testimony say, but I will try my very best. My name is May Lee Vang. I'm so happy to be here. It has been a great country, twenty, thirty, forty years now we've been here. Your love has flourished for us and helped us. It has helped giving the love to Kashiya House. We depend on you, Kashiya depend on you, and we all depend on Kashiya because we have children. We left the war without family support, without our spouses, and we have children who rely on us. So I'm here to thank, ask for your support, and to ask for your help once again. I am so honored and so happy that I am here in a country where you treat me like your children. You don't let me go hungry, and that is love. The second thing I want to say is, I am so sad that Jurney has left us with no home, and the saddest part is, it doesn't give us any advance notice. It just fire us without letting us know, and that is so very sad to me. I wanted to also let you know that without a home, we are very worried, we are stressed, we're lonely, and I wanted to ask for your support. Your money will support us and keep us alive, and that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. We are here as refugees, we have nowhere to turn to. You are here as leaders, we are here in your country, a prosper country, a country that are thoughtful, a country that are loving. We ask, and I ask again, for your support and for your help to make sure that we have a place. As citizens, whether you like, love us or not, we are your citizen, and I ask again for you to support us and give us a place to call home again. If things are to die, things are to happen, and the people will die, I will be the first one to die because we have no home again, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next registrant is May Lee Vang, who will be followed by Meitong Vang.
I know translation doesn't do justice to everything that the testimony say, but I will try my very best. My name is May Lee Vang. I'm so happy to be here. It has been a great country, twenty, thirty, forty years now we've been here. Your love has flourished for us and helped us. It has helped giving the love to Kashiya House. We depend on you, Kashiya depend on you, and we all depend on Kashiya because we have children. We left the war without family support, without our spouses, and we have children who rely on us. So I'm here to thank, ask for your support, and to ask for your help once again. I am so honored and so happy that I am here in a country where you treat me like your children. You don't let me go hungry, and that is love. The second thing I want to say is, I am so sad that Jurney has left us with no home, and the saddest part is, it doesn't give us any advance notice. It just fire us without letting us know, and that is so very sad to me. I wanted to also let you know that without a home, we are very worried, we are stressed, we're lonely, and I wanted to ask for your support. Your money will support us and keep us alive, and that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. And that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. And that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. And that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. And that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. And that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
I want to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. And that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. And that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you to the leader, the mayors, the councilmen, all of the leaders in this room. One more time, I'm here to come and ask for all of your help to lift our hand, to lift our spears, to keep us alive. And that will help us. I'm really old, I don't have many years to live, I will soon die, but until then, I wanna ask for your help. Thank you.
Today, I'm very happy to see all of you up here in front. My name is Gong Xiong.
I'm going to tell you a different story than those before me. In Laos, in 1979, we were in the hand of the communists. So we decided that we can't stay, no longer can we work in that labor because physically it's demanding, so we decided to leave and we headed for Thailand. Our journey in the forest, walking, our journey by foot to survival, we are as scared as the flood that's happening right now. So we were able to cross the Mekong River and stay in Thailand for ten years, waiting for opportunities to resettle. So my husband, who no longer could wait for resettlement, passed away while we were waiting. Kennedy, referencing President Kennedy, promised our leader, General Vang Paul, that he will take care of us, and he couldn't, so that's why we are here. My husband, who was a soldier, were carrying a gun called M-55. His ear got so bloody because of the noise from the gun that he died in Thailand because of that damage. The damage is so bad that he went deaf, and he could not hear. People have to tap him on the shoulder in order to speak to him. So we came, I took two of his children with me. We didn't come here because we saw that your country is prosperous and rich, we came because we have no choice. My husband, who was a soldier, were carrying a gun called AM-55. His ear got so bloody because of the noise from the gun that he died in Thailand because of that damage.
I don't know what to do. 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 I don't know what to do.
The damage is so bad that he went deaf. And he could not hear. People have to tap him on the shoulder in order to speak to him.
I don't know what to do. 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 I don't know what to do.[578.11][578.14][S01. I don't know what to do.[578.98][579.01][S01. I don't know what to do.
So we came. I took two of his children with me. We didn't come here because we saw that your country is prosperous and rich. We came because we have no choice.
I don't know what to do. 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 I don't know what to do.[603.73][603.76][S01. I don't know what to do.[604.60][604.63][S01. I don't know what to do.
So when I got here, I'm at an age where I'm older. I have no English skills. I cannot help myself with everything going on. I discovered Khasia and I went to Khasia, where Khasia helped me with all the paperwork and all the daily communication for me.
I don't know what to do. 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 I don't know what to do.[638.56][638.59][S01. I don't know what to do.[639.46][639.49][S01. I don't know what to do.
Like any other company, a normal company, if they're going to close, they would announce and let their employees know one or two years ahead of time. I don't understand. I don't understand why it's such a sudden close for us. It makes me stressful. I worry. I can't sleep.
I don't know what to do. 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 I don't know what to do.[684.65][685.25][S01. I don't know what to do.
When I was twelve years old, I heard about the Vietnamese, the enemies, who criticize and who yell and talk badly about Americans. They talk about Americans are cold-hearted and bloody people who don't love other people. And they kill people, make people handicap. I never know who the American people are until now that I'm here in America.
I don't know what to do.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nye Chuya.
I don't know what to do. 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 I don't know what to do.
In Laos, I am a lead
I'm a leader.
For my team in Long Jang in 1960.
I don't know what to do. 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 I don't know what to do.[807.37][807.40][S01. I don't know what to do.[808.27][808.30][S01. I don't know what to do. 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 I don't know what to do.[819.12][819.15][S01. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do.[822.19][822.22][S01. I don't know what to do.[823.09][823.12][S01. I don't know what to do.[823.99][824.39][S01. I don't know what to do.[825.26][825.29][S01. I don't know what to do.[826.16][826.19][S01. I don't know what to do.[827.06][827.36][S01. I don't know what to do.[828.23][828.26][S01. I don't know what to do.[829.13][829.16][S01. I don't know what to do.[830.03][830.53][S01. I don't know what to do.[831.39][831.42][S01. I don't know what to do.[832.29][832.79][S01. I don't know what to do.[833.66][833.69][S01. I don't know what to do.[834.56][834.59][S01. I don't know what to do.[835.43][836.23][S01. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do.[838.60][839.10][S01. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do.[841.34][841.37][S01. I don't know what to do.[842.54][842.77][S01. I don't know what to do.[843.64][843.67][S01. I don't know what to do.[844.51][844.54][S01. I don't know what to do.[845.41][845.88][S01. I don't know what to do.[846.75][846.78][S01. I don't know what to do.[847.61][847.88][S01. I don't know what to do.[848.75][848.78][S01. I don't know what to do.[849.65][850.38][S01. I don't know what to do.[851.25][851.98][S01. I don't know what to do.[852.85][852.88][S01. I don't know what to do.[853.75][854.55][S01. I don't know what to do.[855.42][855.45][S01. I don't know what to do.[856.32][856.35][S01. I don't know what to do.[857.22][857.25][S01. I don't know what to do.[858.12][858.25][S01. I don't know what to do.[859.19][859.79][S01. I don't know what to do.[860.66][861.66][S01. I don't know what to do.[862.53][862.56][S01. I don't know what to do.[863.43][863.46][S01. I don't know what to do.[864.33][864.36][S01. I don't know what to do.[865.20][865.23][S01. I don't know what to do.[866.10][866.13][S01. I don't know what to do.[866.97][867.30][S01. I don't know what to do.[868.47][868.50][S01. I don't know what to do.[869.47][869.87][S01. I don't know what to do.[870.74][870.77][S01. I don't know what to do.[871.64][871.67][S01. I don't know what to do.[872.51][872.54][S01. I don't know what to do.[873.41][873.44][S01. I don't know what to do.[874.31][874.34][S01. I don't know what to do.[875.21][875.24][S01. I don't know what to do.[876.11][876.54][S01. I don't know what to do.[877.41][877.78][S01. I don't know what to do.[878.78][879.01][S01. I don't know what to do.[880.01][881.51][S01. I don't know what to do.[882.38][883.48][S01. I don't know what to do.[884.35][884.38][S01. I don't know what to do.[885.25][885.28][S01. I don't know what to do.[886.15][886.18][S01. I don't know what to do.[887.02][887.55][S01. I don't know what to do.[888.42][889.59][S01. I don't know what to do.[890.79][890.82][S01. I don't know what to do.[891.99][892.22][S01. I don't know what to do.[893.09][893.12][S01. I don't know what to do.[893.99][894.89][S01. I don't know what to do.[895.82][896.32][S01. I don't know what to do.[897.19][897.22][S01. I don't know what to do.[898.26][898.46][S01. I don't know what to do.[899.33][899.36][S01. I don't know what to do.[900.23][900.26][S01. I don't know what to do.[901.13][901.16][S01. I don't know what to do.[902.00][902.83][S01. I don't know what to do.[903.70][903.73][S01. I don't know what to do.[904.57][904.60][S01. I don't know what to do.[905.47][905.97][S01. I don't know what to do.[906.84][907.54][S01. I don't know what to do.[908.31][908.54][S01. I don't know what to do.[909.71][910.08][S01. I don't know what to do.[910.95][910.98][S01. I don't know what to do.[911.85][912.01][S01. I don't know what to do.[912.88][913.38][S01. I don't know what to do.[914.25][914.28][S01. I don't know what to do.[915.15][915.51][S01. I don't know what to do.[916.38][916.41][S01. I don't know what to do.[917.28][918.01][S01. I don't know what to do.[918.88][918.91][S01. I don't know what to do.[919.78][920.15][S01. I don't know what to do.[920.98][921.01][S01. I don't know what to do.[921.88][922.18][S01. I don't know what to do.[923.05][923.08][S01. I don't know what to do.[923.95][924.99][S01. I don't know what to do.[925.86][925.89][S01. I don't know what to do.[926.72][926.75][S01. I don't know what to do.[927.62][927.65][S01. I don't know what to do.[928.52][928.55][S01. I don't know what to do.[929.42][929.45][S01. I don't know what to do.[930.32][931.29][S01. I don't know what to do.[932.16][932.89][S01. I don't know what to do.[933.76][933.79][S01. I don't know what to do.[934.66][934.69][S01. I don't know what to do.[935.56][935.59][S01. I don't know what to do.[936.43][936.93][S01. I don't know what to do.[937.80][937.83][S01. I don't know what to do.[938.67][938.70][S01. I don't know what to do.[939.57][939.60][S01. I don't know what to do.[940.47][940.84][S01. I don't know what to do.[941.71][943.71][S01. I don't know what to do.
Again, there's a lot in there. I will try my best. So, my leader, General Vang Pow, have asked us to join the American, the CIA, to fight, fight for the war. And said that if we lost, we will be helped. Americans will help us. In that time, the Americans fly the airplane and drop bombs while we work by hand, by foot on the ground, carry guns. We carry C-130. These C-130 are so powerful, so loud, them ears. We put yellow earplugs on and we turn it on and fire. And after that, we take the earplug out and we do that so much that our ears are damaged. Our ears are no longer workable. My arm hurts. For me, I have no children. I cannot help myself. I am not sure if I would die or live if there is no Khasia House. If you don't believe, you can come and inspect me for my arms, for my body, for all the pain that I am enduring. In Omaha, I have nose plug. People talk about the war and they talk about, and we talk about how the fight was so powerful. The gun that we used to bomb was so powerful that within a mile radius, cows and human would die. The doctor, when they treated me, asked, "Why are Hmong elders, why our eardrums are all damaged from one side to the other?" People like me, all we have is hope, otherwise we die. Because carrying the war on our shoulder with a C-130 is heavy, it's hard work, and it damaged us physically. And that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Keys is next.
Do you need interpretation?
She asked if I needed interpretation. I don't need that, but I wish I had the courage and capabilities they have in expressing language and reaching back into their souls and their hearts. In 1999, I retired and I began looking immediately for something to do in this community. I found Khasia House a year later, 2000, and I immediately saw that my work was there. Teaching English, citizenship, histories. And they taught me much more, cross-cultural issues, guiding beliefs. More than I gave, they gave to me. When starting, the Khasia House participants asked me, "How long are you going to be here?" I thought about that question and told somebody about it. And I was informed that there is a subtext to that question. "Are you simply another one of the broken promises?" The staff, I found to be talented, gifted, expert, capable, and compassionate in their work for the participants. And I learned that they were a staff that the participants trusted. Since then, I have learned how important Khasia House is for family and individual support and for healing, for gaining a sense and reality of belonging to this country and time and to this community. And to earn their citizenship, which is one of the great moments in their lives. When they earn the citizenship and they know, and they're excited to hear this, they are now my political equal. When their vote counts the same as mine. They lit up to hear that. Now, they are my political equal and we share opinions. Sometimes very different, sometimes the same, but we enjoy the exchange and the verbal. I won't use the word, well, I will use the word combat in a most positive way. We learn about American and world geography, cross-cultural patterns and values and expectations, family stories and hopes for families. Excuse me. Khasia House taught me something to do, to stand outside myself and realize the truths about all ourselves. And from Khasia House, I learned their courage and their resolve to bring into their lives what they need to succeed. Healing, belonging, and safety, what all native and immigrant families and individuals should have in their lives. I would urge you, encourage you to do the right thing and support any resolutions and any actions and any financing that is necessary to support the courage and resolve of our Hmong neighbors and fellow citizens. There are now 250 to 300 more than there were in 2000. That's a very good change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First, I want to give gratitude to my elders who came out here. I know it's hard for them to come out in a space like this. Good evening. My name is Savang Chaum. I am a genocide survivor, American and Cambodian. Thank you for taking the time to listen to what I have to say. I was born during the Palport Khmer Rouge region, April 17, 1975. Dressed in black uniforms, the communist soldiers forced two millions resident from our homes, saying we were being evacuated briefly to avoid American bombing. We walked for days. Many were separated from family members, others being tied together by sewing threads and worn that if the threads broken, they would be shot. Those who survived the journo, the journey, were brought to camp in the countryside, tortured, executed, starved, overworked for more than three years. This was a secret war that Mayor described yesterday. This was a story I remember my brothers and sister told me. My sibling didn't even know that I existed because they were gone for three years. I lost my father at the age of four, living in Thailand camp. My mother was left with eight children to raise by herself. Many of us came to the United States with nothing but our dead souls. We had to learn new languages, culture, and live in poverty. My mother passed away when I was only 13 years old. She died of stroke, which caused by stress and anxiety. Seventy percent of Cambodian people has PTSD, the prevalence of depressions and post-traumatic stress disorders. Cambodian-American refugee immigrant population is more than 10 times the national average that they experience hypertension, heart disease, diabetes, strokes, and death. Quote, "When you have such astronomically high rate, it shows this population has been ignored." "They have low body mass index, yet they're dying of strokes and cardiovascular disease." "It's so unexpected," say Berkeley from Yukon Magazine. Kamai health advocates consider this a manifestation of genocide because the American healthcare system has not addressed the purification of genocide, who have thought you'll get diabetes from a high level of cortisol that happened 40 years ago. The population specifically symptoms and other cultural factor means having ethical Pacific community health workers has been critical to get people to understand and accept treatment. This is why the Cambodian temple and the Khasia House is essential to our communities. Khasia House and temple is a place of healing and community that's offered wrapped around services, services, including psychiatrists and counseling, case management such as helping with citizenships, housing and benefits, family relationships, transportation, daily communications and meals and mostly culture specifically activities. I'm asking for your support to vote for the resolution 53063 to amend the 2018 operating budget to appropriate 40,000 from the contingency reserve for one time of funding for the Cambodian and Hmong treatment center and talks about gratitude. When we have gratitude, we live a little bit happier. Thank you.
Hello. It seems like I'm everywhere in the last couple of days. I'm here to talk about, I wanted to, I'm Hmong. My name is Gajua. I work, I'm a co-director at Freedom Inc. We work with Black Cambodian and Hmong populations. And I was gonna talk about the impact on Hmong folks, but I, as you can see, that's being talked about. Tonight, I want to focus on the Kamai piece of, of what it means and what's the impact on Cambodian community. I think it's really extremely important that you all understand that almost 80% of Kamai elders live in linguistically isolated. What does that mean? That means that if they are locked out, it's sub-zero weather, they can't ask anybody around them for help. It means if there's a fire at home, they can't ask their neighbors for help. It also, Cambodian statistics says that they are amongst one of the poorest throughout the whole country. That's the poorest, even more poorer than most Hmong folks. And so what does that mean? That means that not having adequate health care further impacts this community. I'm gonna tell, talk a little bit about the impact since September 6. I think it's the, that was the date. Since September 6, Freedom Inc. is one of the very few agencies in town that provides services to Cambodian folks. Since then, we've had people camp out in our office because they are too afraid. They don't know where to go. They have high anxiety. Depression is up. There's fear of what kind of treatment are they gonna have after the closing? I think that it's important to know that although you all are talking about Kashiya House, Kashiya House a component that provides mental health services at the temple in Oregon, and that's the piece that we're talking about. The devastation that it will have on this community is immeasurable. And so I would urge you all to like really look at that. Though the Cambodian population is small, smaller than the Hmong population, the impact is equally devastating. The other thing I wanted to talk about, I don't know if I have three minutes or five minutes. Okay. But I, when they said five, I was like, oh, great. I can talk about a lot of stuff. But anyway, so the other thing that I wanted to bring up is that this is a direct attack on the most vulnerable people, not only in our whole community, but in our community. As you can see, there's a lot of Hmong women elders. You know why? Because during the war, many of the men died. There's a lot of Kamai female elders because during the war, many men died. And so the impact on women, the impact on those who are disabled, the impact on those with mental wellness, this is the most vulnerable population that we're supposed to protect. So my question for Journey is why the most vulnerable population? When you cut programs, when you have a deficit, you don't cut the most vulnerable population. That is inhumane and that's shameful. So after telling us September 6, guess what? They didn't think that this population would stand up and fight for itself. But what they forgot was this population has children, us. It has you all, people with hearts and minds. And so we're here to say, though you were trying to attack them, they have children, they have loved ones, and we're not gonna stand here and just let that happen. The other thing that you all need to know is Journey needs to be held accountable for letting go of program that no one else can serve. These people don't have other programs throughout the city that they can go to. It's not like they can go to the senior, senior center. It's not like they can go to farmer's market. It's not like any other place that's public that you all, that we protect, they can just get up and go and say, this is where I'm gonna go Saturday, or this is where I'm gonna go Monday morning. I'm gonna go walk at this park. They don't have that. Many of them can't drive. Many of them don't have the capacity. Many of have language capacity. This population has Kashiya House or Freedom Inc. And so now what's happened is the majority of them are coming over to us. We don't have the capacity to provide mental health services. But we're forced to do something because where else are they gonna go? The last thing I want to say is, I think it's important that you all allocate this funding to keep them going until December, but that's not enough. What is enough is you need to figure out what we need for 2019. Because their devastation and their depression and their mental wellness, it doesn't go away in December. It continues. We've had people talk about suicide. My mother goes to Kashiya House. She wonders where she's gonna go. I have an auntie who's been going to Kashiya House for 18 years. This is her home. So I urge you all not only to vote tonight, but to think about 2019. What is that gonna look like? I urge you to think about the Kamai community that doesn't ask for anything. They don't get any funding. They're the most funded population in the whole city. And so I leave you with that. Think about where this communicate, uh, community is going. And no, they do have, and Journey, they do have children who care a lot about them and they do have people who care about them. And so an attack on them is an attack on our community and that is not acceptable.
There's a couple of handwritings we can't read, but in the meantime, is Jenny Sam here? Jenny Sam?
My name is Jenny Sam. I am a Cambodian director in Madison. And this is my second time that I meet our mayor and also the city of council. I'm so happy to be here and also I have, I try not to cry or I try not to, to say anything to give you guys so much stress and depressed right now from all these things that we bring it up. But anyway, I am a survivor of the war also and I'm the oldest one. I have no shame to tell you that. I'm the oldest one, work for Freedom Inc. And I've been through war. I've been through domestic abuse by Spao. I'm, I'm talking about, my job is so fit with all this problem that I, my job, my title. So I'm here to ask you that my people, Cambodian people is very humble, it's very sweet, very kind, very hardly ask anything from, from, from the city, like not a big stuff, you know what I mean? But, but temple, temple is the place for our people to heal, to meet, to release stress, depress, suicide. Temple is the, like a mental health place. And this is not my job title, but because I work for Freedom Inc. as the director of Cambodian in Madison, I do it all. It doesn't matter who and how many day, I work seven days a week. Now, and also Cambodian is impacted with ICE also. So over this weekend, I work every day from nine to whatever times. So I don't know what else to say because the more I say probably is wrong thing because I'm, this is the second times that I talk in, how do you call that, public speak. It's very scary. Hell that Gajua always do that to me. So please, please help me, help Cambodian people. Let this program going and I would love to beg you and I would love to ask you to vote and funding us and let our programs going this year and many more years to come. I'm sorry I asked you too much, but please, 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 Aukun. Thank you.
A couple of people who registered have indicated that they, they don't want to speak at this time. In the meantime, Alderman Cheeks, did?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Ready?
Please.
Okay. All right. So I'm not translating. I'm going to speak. My name is Mai Jean Vu. I wanted to just share a couple of things about what we're talking about tonight. I think I don't need to give you any more secondary trauma by telling stories of war because that's something that is very hard if you haven't experienced that. I say that because as a child who was born during the Vietnam War, I witnessed, I inherit the secondary trauma from my father who was a soldier and all the things that was said here, I live that inside of me as well. So I wanted to just say some of the things that I think we should also look at. My 22 years, I worked for the state refugee office and one of the thing that refugee programs always view refugees is that they're vulnerable and that they're not capable and so forth. One thing they did not know is that refugee women, like these women when they first came, they are the best case manager for their family. They knew how to navigate their own system so they can support each other. They build stereotypes for other when others don't understand them. So for example, the concept of cooperative, where you pool money together and you buy me a car this month. And then next month, we all pool money, we save and we buy another person a car, has helped them become the survivor. And when people don't understand and they say, how come these Hmong women live in public system, they drive brand new van? What they don't know is that the values of having a reliable transportation so they can take care of the family is the most important. So I wanted to say that Kashiya House is prevention for all of us. Prevention in a sense of teaching our elders, teaching our young ones how to love each other, how to have courage, how to be strong. These elder may not have the language, but they have the love, the kindness in them. And they will make sure that their nieces, nephew, learn to love each other. And when you have strong kids, kids who are doing the best, kids who don't go to DOC, that's prevention. When the elders are there and strongly, like an umbrella providing shade for the family, their son, their daughter happily go to work every day and pay taxes. And that's our tax levy that we contribute to as their children and grandchildren become employers and become full productive citizens of Madison. Kashiya House, these elder are, are history. They're the last, last ones that is evidence to all of us of the war. They're the one that are becoming our educators. They're the one that's sharing the history to teach us how to love each other. They are the one that reminds us every day that life is more precious than just keep fighting with each other. They are our hope. They are our hope because they teach us that no matter how hard life is, have hope. They teach us how to work hard and fulfill the legacy that they're leaving and that is never lose faith, there is God and there's angel like all of you in this room, who's going to lend, lend a helping hand when there is a need. So tonight, I just wanna say thank you all for being great leaders in our city. I am proud to be in Madison all the last two and a half decades of my life. Madison is not just the best place to live, but it's also the people who lived here, who care for each other and who love each other and who come through when others need them. And you guys are modeling that for other communities. So I wanted to say thank you for being our strong leaders, being our buffers when the tornadoes come, when we have no sunshine. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Molly Bennett. I just wanted to speak out my voice and let you guys understand how important it is to our, regards to our temple. And I am speaking on behalf of the 1.5 generation from Freedom Inc. And when my mother went through the Kamai Rouge, you know, having those nightmares, tears and telling her, telling me stories how she went through all the pain and separating from families and suffering. Having the temple is like a soothing. It's like going to church, someone you can talk to, someone you can heal with, talk about your problems, your dreams, your aches, your pain. And having my mother go through that, going to the temple, it eased her mind and her, less of her nightmares comes. Yes, you know, you may not think that's a big impact in our community, but it is. We see it with younger generation that helping our elders, my aunts and uncles who went through the Kamai Rouge, it really does help with the help of the community and with the services. It helps out a whole lot. You may not think it's a difference, but does. It makes a whole lot of difference. It shows us that keep fighting. Those nightmares that you have will be in the past and you leave in the future. And by taking this away, it's like taking our dreams away too, that maybe we have issues, we can't run to the temple. We need some stressful relief. We can go there and talk to the Buddhists or else the services there that can help us that outside of our life, what can we do? I just wanted to speak out and have you guys understand how much is it's really important to me, my family and all the community, Kamai community here. Because without them, I don't think my mother will be where she's at right now. I would have lost a mother at a young age, the same as Savan. I don't want that. I, having a community like this and having the services, it really is a big deal to us. And please, I'm begging you, please don't take it away. Because without the temple, I wouldn't be able to take my kids there and show them how much of a big impact having the temple here in Madison. So it's all I wanted to say was just little words like this and hopefully my voice would speak out for the younger generation that without the temple, we wouldn't be here right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the City of Madison Common Council, community members, family and friends. My name is Sia Vang and I'm a resident physician at UW Health Northeast Family Medical Center. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of my colleagues who are not able to be here. As part of the medical community, we were astonished when we heard about the plans to suddenly close Kashiya House and the Cambodian temple. In particular, we were shocked that no clear plans have been made by Journey Mental Health to transition the mental health care of these vulnerable populations. Closure of these two programs will have an enormous impact on the health of the Hmong and Cambodian population in Dane County and will undoubtedly cause re-traumatization when these participants find themselves displaced once again. The therapy program at Kashiya House and the Cambodian temple have been invaluable community resources for our patients. The Cambodian temple was established in 1990 and has become a community center for ritual and cultural events for not only the Cambodian, but also Laotian residents. Through Journey Mental Health, these residents receive psychiatric care, counseling and case management to assist with housing, benefits and employment. For the Hmong population, Kashiya House is a unique cultural program that began in 2000 to help overcome cultural stigma against mental health in the Hmong community. Since then, Kashiya House has become a refuge for the Hmong residents who use its resources. As you've heard several stories this evening, as refugees of the Vietnam War, many of these participants suffer from PTSD, depression and anxiety. In fact, 25% of the Hmong speaking population at Northeast Clinic have depression. Through Kashiya House, participants receive culturally sensitive mental health treatment and therapy that they are unable to receive anywhere else. At Northeast Clinic, we serve almost 200 Hmong and Cambodian speaking patients. There have been times when our providers have struggled to provide optimal care for some of these vulnerable Southeast Asian patients. Not only are they non-English speaking, they also have low health literacy and they face significant socioeconomic barriers such as lack of transportation. It is a relief when we find that these patients are connected with either Kashiya House or the Cambodian temple. My colleagues and I have had to reach out to staff members at these two programs to help facilitate and coordinate care for many of these patients since they often rely on these, on these two programs and it's essentially their medical home. I find that even though I am a Hmong physician and I speak Hmong, which eliminates the language barrier, having that extra support person to help these elders with low health literacy, in this case in the form of case managers or community health workers, is instrumental when it comes to providing quality care. Through its comprehensive, holistic and culturally competent services, Journey Mental Health Center have made the Kashiya House and the Cambodian temple a second home, a safety net for many of our patients. In closure, Kashiya House and the program at the Cambodian temple are two of Madison's most prized examples of not only culturally competent care, but patient-centered care. We are imploring your assistance to help provide the requested 40,000 emergency funding to maintain these two programs for the remainder of 2018 so that there's no gap in services. We thank you and your support to continue these two invaluable programs. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Puzong Tao and I'm 16 years old. From what I know, Kashiya House has been part of 200, over 200 people's lives for a really long time. For many elders, it was a place where they can be themselves and feel less lonely. It's a place full of happiness and love. Many of the elders that attend Kashiya House suffered from depression, PTSD and anxiety. During the Vietnam War, During the Vietnam War, many of these elders lost, sorry, lost their loved ones. And to this day, some of them are still afraid. Some can't even go to sleep without hearing gunshots. Kashiap House is a healing place for many elders. This place is where they can share their stories and be listened to. It saved many people's lives, and this is why I called Kashiap House a very heroic My grandma and grandpa both are clients at Kashiap House. There have been many times where they needed us to translate their mails from their doctors, but we couldn't translate because we don't understand medical terminologies in Hmong. Kashiap House staffs are some of the best people in these elders' lives. They help not only with mental health, but also help educate all these elders. Please hear our voices, and please invest in us.
Hi, my name is Peyton Yang, and I am a youth leader at Freedom, Inc. And I'm here today to support Kashiap House. My grandma was a survivor of the secret war. She ran for her life to bring all of us here today. Which ultimately led me here to speak with you all today. As a survivor of violence, war, and genocide, my grandma was constantly depressed and unhappy about her memories of the war. And it really scarred her. And even though she survived, she'll never be the same, and that's what trauma looks like. The only way she knew how to deal with her trauma was to garden and go to Kashiap House. It was her only way of healing and escaping trauma. And I can't even imagine how she's feeling right now, because Journey is closing Kashiap House. It's not just my grandma, but all of her friends that is feeling so many feelings that it is hard to put into words. They can't process how they feel, because they're forced to accept that this is the end of Kashiap House. So I want you all to really understand that Kashiap House means the world to its patients, employees, families, and friends. I don't want my grandma to be trapped in her trauma and told to deal with it. Please keep funding Kashiap House and its patients. By doing this, you'll help my grandma, and her friends, and my people to continue services that allow them to live and not just survive.
Hi, my name is Rachel Neeson, and this is Ariel Peña, and we are part of a social work student organization here today urging you all to pass Resolution 53063 and secure emergency funding for Kashiap House. As you've heard, many Cambodian and Hmong refugees live with mental health conditions like PTSD, anxiety, and depression. Without the necessary funding to keep Kashiap House and Cambodian Temple open, Cambodian and Hmong refugees will be at increased risk for suicide, social isolation, and other adverse health conditions. The model of community-based, culturally-specific mental health care model at Kashiap House has been shown to be beneficial for minority communities. In a study with Latinx immigrants, there was a 91% retention rate with high reports of satisfaction and decreases in stress-related symptoms in clients. Clients also reported that proceeding with treatment in a community environment made their experiences feel validated and valued. The Hmong and Cambodian communities have needs that differ greatly from other groups, including other minority groups with mental health issues in the United States. Why? One reason is the lack of trust in Western medical advice due to differences in symptom expression of mental health problems in Hmong-Cambodian and white American cultures, differences in cultural models of healing in Hmong-Cambodian and white American cultures, a lack of medical care literacy due to language barriers, and a history of unfulfilled promises from the American government to the Cambodian and Hmong people during the Cold War and the Vietnam War, which results in a cultural distrust of white people that extends to healthcare professionals. A second reason that their needs are different is the existing health disparities. Cambodian Americans with depression and PTSD are not only at a higher risk for developing additional chronic conditions, but are also the least likely to receive appropriate mental health services. Additionally, Hmong and Cambodian communities are at increased risk for social isolation compared to other groups. A third reason why their needs are different is due to their refugee status. Refugee communities have basic human needs that must be met before mental health treatment can be successful. Navigating the American education, workforce, and housing systems are all challenges for refugees due to language barriers, cultural differences, and unstable incomes. Treatment models that include assistance with these challenges while providing culturally-sensitive mental health care are more effective than treatment models that don't.
Kashiap House and Cambodian Temple address the needs that were just described in the following ways. One is cultural brokering and case management through individual, family, and group counseling, through advocacy, translation services, and all of which are provided by bilingual cultural brokers. Secondly, the Kashiap House addresses the disproportionate prevalence of poor health outcomes in Hmong and Cambodian Americans with culturally-defined health and skill-building programs, including free meals, English classes, citizenship classes, and medication consultations. Thirdly, Kashiap House model incorporates culturally-competent mental health literacy and help-seeking services through an explanatory model of illness shaped by personal, social, and cultural influences, strongly associated with culturally-defined beliefs on treatment and help-seeking behaviors as compared to the Western bio-psychosocial model of mental illness. This includes a holistic perspective to health with an integration of social, emotional, and spiritual well-being, and shapes the mental illness, mental health, and illness around the individual's own conceptual language, values, and metaphors. And a fourth way that Kashiap House and Cambodian Temple addresses the needs of the community is through sponsored community events that give space for individuals to keep cultural practices that would be lost with a proposed transition. Kashiap House and Cambodian Temple act as links for providing access to social services through community events that can have a positive emotional impact on the individuals who access their services. Without such a bridge, this creates more barriers to positive, culturally-specific community building. These services are needed more than ever to mitigate economic, educational, and health disparities that exist between Hmong and white Americans, as well as Cambodian and white Americans. Kashiap House and Cambodian Temple are the only programs in Dane County designed to meet the specific needs of Cambodian and Hmong refugees. For this reason, it is imperative that the Common Council pass Resolution 53063 to amend the 2018 operating budget to appropriate $40,000 from the contingent reserve for a one-time-only funding for Kashiap House and Cambodian Temple.
My name is Mai Tho, and I'm a youth leader at Freedom, Inc. Kashiap House has been around to help our Hmong people for a long time now. My mom is a client at Kashiap House, and her name is Galau. When I heard that Kashiap House was closing, my heart ached, because I know that Kashiap House is a part of my Hmong community, and this is what they call home. Kashiap House had been here to help our Hmong elders with medical needs, and just being there for them when they need to clear out their minds. I honestly can't thank Kashiap House enough, because they helped me and my family a lot when we couldn't take my mom to see her doctors. I see that when she comes home from Kashiap House, she looks more happy than the days she just stays home. All I ask for you all to support Kashiap House this year in 2019.
So I just want to thank the elders for their time and patience in listening to all the speakers, but I've been asked by the mayor to read the folks who sign up and do not want, and support but did not want to speak their names. So Doada, Catherine Chang, Tsom Mong Va, Angela Ai, Mai Cita, Jamie Vang, Sang Lee, and Linda Keys.
Discussion on the question.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody that's here tonight to speak to us and to be present here about the Hmong and Cambodian community. And we, I think I can speak for all of us, we can say that we are very honored and humbled to have an opportunity to hear from you and hear your stories. I certainly urge my fellow elders to support this resolution. I'm hoping we get a unanimous vote, so that we can show that we're going to stand with a community that has come together and has made sure to let not only us at the City Council, but others know that it is not okay for us in Madison to continuously talk about equity, but to then proceed to hurt those who are the most vulnerable in our community and who have access to what we should consider to be an amazing best practice for all communities, which is a culturally-relevant, linguistically-appropriate, wraparound services that really takes mental health services and the need of communities who have been so impacted by war and immigration, and provide those services in such an amazing way. So what we should be doing really is thinking about how we should extend these services, do more of them, do more of them for other communities, as opposed to trying to really cut these services. So again, I urge you to support it. I haven't, I just want to also say on the record that there have been many, many conversations about the continued funding for Kashiap House and the services offered at the Cambodian Temple. I will save you kind of all of those conversations, but to say that I want to certainly thank Peng her and Mai Jang Vu for their leadership, as well as Kajwa. And I want to, I want to say that Supervisor Jamie Kuna at the county has also been an incredible ally and has worked tirelessly to make sure that the county is contributing in a different way than we are doing it in the city resolution, but again, to maintain the services until the end of 2018, while we consider, we, and by we, we mean all of us as a community, we consider what needs to happen to make sure that the services continue in 2019 and beyond. But, so there've been a lot of discussions and work around it. And one thing that I would say out of those discussions and work is that, once the community organizes and comes together, the solution belongs to the community. And we are here with a solution that has been brought forth by the community, for the community. And so, if you hear any rumors of why we chose the fiscal agent that we chose, and why not try to continue services maybe in a, maybe a different way, this is the solution that the community came forth with after they organized and have had many discussions, and it is up to us to again honor the community organizing and coming forth with their own solution of what they think would be the appropriate long-term way to continue providing the services that are provided currently at the Kashiap House and the Cambodian Temple. So thank you.
Just briefly, I want to really thank Alder Bedar Slav for bringing this forward. I think when we learned about this news, I think probably many of us immediately thought, oh, what can we do? And within, it seemed like 24 hours, Shiva was like, I got it, I can show you what we can do. And so, thank you for that. Thank you as well to Peng her for your leadership on this. Thank you for helping to organize the community and for the great conversations we've had over the weekend. And thank you to the elders for being here and speaking to us and sharing your stories. It is unthinkable to hear your stories and simultaneously hear such a story of gratitude. I'm going to be thinking about the word gratitude that I felt like it seemed like everyone said for the rest of the night. Shiva said it exactly right, that you know, as we're thinking about most vulnerable populations, this is almost the least that we can do. I think all of us spent this weekend wishing that we could do more to protect vulnerable families from the harm that the federal government was inflicting on our community. And this is, you know, when we think about social safety nets and ways to protect community, to protect our community, to protect our people, which is what we're looking at here. I'm honored to be able to support this. So thank you, thank you for coming out here tonight, and thank you to my colleagues who I know are going to support this.
Thank you. Alder Woman Carter?
Thank you. I do have some questions, and maybe Peng can answer them, or whoever feels confident. So for the Kashiap House, I know there was transportation with Journey. Is there going to be transportation with this?
So, let me just clarify, transportation is not with Journey. Transportation is-
I mean, when it was housed in Journey.
Sure. So the transportation goes with the client. It pays for the client. So wherever the client needs to go for health, for their care, that transportation is provided for them. So it could be to any location they would like.
Okay. And where's the new location for this?
So the new location, you have to come Friday to our celebration at Kashiap House. They won't make the announcement to you at that time.
Friday?
Friday.
But there is another location-
There is another location.
-that is confirmed.
Correct. Confirmed, and they are, both parties, the location and the elders are excited about the new location.
Okay. So how did, how did you come up with the process of the $150,000?
Sure. So working with the staff at Kashiap House, looking at what was needed budgetary-wise to pay for some of the case management, as well as food, because they provide a meal there, to see how much it would take to cover the end of the year, and that's how we came up with that figure.
Okay. And then, I think I read somewhere where there was going to be fundraising. Is that part of the community, or?
Yeah, so the community has been fundraising, both myself, as well as the larger community, and so we've been very, we've found the community very supportive of that, and so we've been very happy with the community out, as well as the community support, both at the county level and here at the City Council also.
So that will supplement the total of $150,000?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So can, briefly, can you tell me the difference between the temple and Kashiap House?
So Kashiap House is located at the Mendota Mental Health Campus on the north side, and it serves, we have a caseload of 153 active caseloads, whereas the Cambodian program, both being a wraparound service, is located at the Cambodian Temple or Oregon. So two different locations, but serving two vulnerable populations, both, as you heard tonight, felt, many of them, if you read between the lines, have been re-traumatized by this event, and so they are looking forward to, or they are looking to move forward in regards to the new location, as well as continuing the services without any gaps in services.
So are they both going to be at the new location, or are they still separate?
Nope, it will still be separate. The Cambodian Temple is owned by the Cambodian community, and that program has ran out of there, run from that program. So there will be funding for staff there, as well as then the new location for Kashiap House, the piece that was at Mendota.
Okay. And so, part of your fiscal agent, you do have an active contract with them?
Correct, yes, we do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alder Woman McKinney is next.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. When we first heard the news of the closing, we were at the Committee on Aging, and we were appalled as well. And what we did was we referred it back to Jim O'Keefe's department, but I want to thank Alder Bedar for taking the forward step in what we see before us now, and so I-
And so, I really want to thank her for, for that action. And the question about the, how did you arrive at the formula for the funding that was asked and answered by Alder Carter, and I really appreciate that. The other piece is that I would like for you to, to refer back to us, especially through the Committee on Aging, you know, what that, what that looks like. I mean, we did a short-term funding from now until the end of the year. That is not sustainable. And so, to really, to sit down and see what it would take to run your organization and so that we can determine how we can share in that value and make sure that comes back before the Committee on Aging. And I would say that you should do that very quickly.
Thank you for that suggestion, and that's something that we can look into also.
Elder Woman Fair?
Thank you. So, at the risk of repeating a few people, I'm just going to try to keep this brief, but I certainly am honored to be a co-sponsor of this. And I want to repeat and just thank everybody for, for coming and being here. It's very powerful for us to hear from so many people in the community. That really means a lot, sitting on this side, to listen to all the stories. And I repeat also the thanks to Alder Bedar. You're a champion of so many people and it's, it's very moving. I, I think that, I feel good about this in so many ways, but to, to be able to help the community in need and do some, do this is important. I mean, to fund culturally relevant services like this is something that we, we do a little of and we should continue to do more of. And I hope that we can all, as has been said, work with the community to try to find a long-term solution to this, this problem. And then I, I'll just say on a personal note, and I really hope you take this the right way, I don't mean to bring it back to myself, so please don't take it like that, but to hear your stories and to think about my little traumatic thing that happened to me pales in comparison. So, I'm just really happy that we can do what we're doing tonight and hope that we can do more in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Elder Woman Neeran's?
Oh, thank you. I'm trying to understand, so is part of this, I guess I could ask you or Peng her, is the funding that we're providing, this is the anesthesia therapy, they're a fiscal agent?
Yeah. So, they're a fiscal agent. Fiscal agent in the sense that both, they provide the fiscal ability to bill, both CCS, where a lot of the reimbursement comes to help provide for the funding for the program as well as the medical management, because you need to have a licensed social worker or LPC to review and look over the clinicians as they provide services to the clients, the elders.
And they've been the fiscal agent before or they're a new fiscal agent?
They are new. The original fiscal agent was Journey.
I see.
And so, as you, we know-
Okay. I didn't know. Okay. And, and they'll be provide, funding goes to Khasia House and to the Cambodian Temple, both?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Okay. And how does, and does Freedom Inc. provide some of the services to Khasia House as well?
No. Freedom Inc. is a separate nonprofit that does their own thing.
But they, but they provide services to Hmong in Bayview or?
They provide different services to different, to both Hmong and Cambodian clients, but yes.
Okay. And do you know what the, what the county's contribution here is or?
The, the county's contribution is 40,000 for 2018.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Elder Woman Roman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone, for coming and everyone's leadership who brought us to this point. I just want to say, I've heard all the thank yous and appreciation, but I just want to say, I share the distress that you must feel at the abrupt cancellation of services. And I'm so sorry this happened to you. And, and I hope our small piece of getting it rewritten will help. And again, just thank you for coming and telling us, sharing your stories with us. We know you're here and you don't always show up and daily, in our daily life, but I want, it's good to know you're here and we want you to thrive and be happy.
Elder Woman Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to extend my profound gratitude for everybody who came here today and who came and testified.
Vincent Nolan?
Sharing, sharing stories like this is incredibly hard. There's still, there's still stigmas associated with seeking help for mental health issues. We're only beginning to learn things about the effects of historical trauma on populations. And I, I, I'm, I'm so grateful for you all to be able to share these experiences with us so that we can see this, see how important this is to your community. And I, I just appreciate it and I'm looking forward to working with folks on the council and everybody else in your community too, to make sure that we can provide and assist you guys in the future beyond this year. Thanks.
Elder Woman Carter?
Thank you. I had just one more question for Peng. I think someone said that the elders can stay at Khasia House all day or for a specific length of time. Would that still be true for your new location?
Correct. The, the hours at the old location is about nine, 9:30 to about 2, 2:30. And that'd be the same for the, the new location also.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else is in the queue? I'd like to just say a few words. I don't want to repeat everything that I said at the Finance Committee on this, but I do want to point out that we're continuing to see the history of betrayal, which unfortunately is, is too universal. It goes back to the secret war. It goes back to what we did in regards to destabilizing a, a very fruitful and prosperous region, which then at one point led to the control of the Khmer Rouge, which is just one of the worst episodes in, in, in history. There was something very admirable done by Governor Doyle a number of years ago, which unfortunately has led nowhere. He put in several million dollars, which was to be used for a cultural center, and additional monies had to be raised. I participated in trying to raise some of those funds from the private sector and from those who were involved in, in that war. But in the meantime, as Scott Walker came into office, those funds were eventually removed from the state budget. And I would hope that no matter who is the next governor of this state, that they'll commit to fully raise the funds necessary for a cultural facility here, here in the Madison area, which would be important for not just religious purposes, but for the celebration of life and for, for funerals. The Hmong and Cambodian refugees who arrived in this country and particularly in Madison have asked for very little, very little, which is why this is such an important, important Last thing I want to share with you is this. When disagreeable decisions are made, at least they are sometimes, most of the time, And very frankly, having met several weeks ago with a, a committee that came forth to discuss this issue with us, and having seen the logic that was put forth, I cannot in any way understand why this decision was made. And I would hope that not only will we ensure the continuation of the programming, but demand an explanation as to the logic behind the decision so that we are in a position to combat any other failures of this sort. Elder Woman Waldah?
So, I just want to re-echo what everybody had just said, but I also want to remind this council and the mayor that the demographic of this city is changing. And so many things are changing also at the federal government level and at the state level. So, eventually, it is becoming our responsibility to protect our residents. And that also includes how we really look at our budgets and how we do our budgets. As we ask, what do we do next? This money is just enough maybe to provide for these people until at the end of this year. But come next year, our demographics are changing, our needs are changing, the federal government, like you said, is, is really betraying some of America's commitment to its people. America's greatness is not only dependent on America, it's dependent on the whole world. And so, so many responsibilities are now shifting to local government. And I hope as we move forward or as we go into next year, we start thinking about some of these populations, their fears, their vulnerability, and how we can really cater for them in our budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. And that reminded me of one other thing I overlooked that I wanted to share, which is I find it very refreshing what we're about to do here, given that this week, the Trump administration is about to establish or attempt to establish new rules in regards to immigration and the wealth that an immigrant would have to bring into this country to be allowed to settle, which I can assure everybody in this room who has ancestors that came to this country, it's most likely your family and your ancestors would not meet these rules. Further discussion? Seeing none on the question which is adoption, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed no? No opposition? I didn't ask for a roll call. It's a two-thirds vote, but with there is no opposition, I'll rule that the matter is adopted and, and has passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to go to public hearings. And the first item is declaring a public hearing open on item four, which is to change zoning of properties on State Street, the recommendations the council's to adopt with conditions. This is a recess public hearing. I have three people who have registered to start with. Where did Jeff go? Oh, there you are. Okay. Jeff Rikaudren is first, Kate Buscic or Buscic? Busca? And then Kenneth, I can't read the third and fourth letters of your last name.
Yeah.
Thank you. Will be the first registrations. Samba? Do I have to, are you using this? Which means I've got to turn the projector on? What do I want to push here? It says projector is off. Does anybody know how to turn the projector on?
We gotta wait.
No.
It was coming on.
Oh, wait, maybe the people hidden away on fourth or third floor are doing this. Yeah, this stuff's coming up over here, but, and the projector light's coming on. Samba? Want to take the chair for a moment?
All right.
So, this is the-
I got the three. Better up there.
Okay.
Karik is talking now, right?
Yep. Or Jeff is talking. Sorry.
You ready? Oh. All right. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Jeff Rikaudren, representing Ascendant Holdings, here tonight seeking your approval of a proposed hotel on the 100 block of State Street. We come before you after about a two-and-a-half-year, very collaborative process with the neighborhood, with planning staff, with the alder of the district. So, we're very happy with the end result of where we ended up. As you've seen in the staff report, we've been before the Urban Design Commission, the Transportation Commission, Plan Commission, Landmarks, and UDC, and received almost all unanimous recommendations with a couple of exceptions at those. So, we, we feel like this project has been very well-vetted over the last two-and-a-half years with strong support from property owners on the block as well as from the, the commissions that have, have reviewed it before tonight. So, we're excited to present this to you and seek your approval. So, I'll turn it over to Kate Busca, who is with Provenance Hotels, which is the hotel operator.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. As Jeff said, I'm representing Provenance Hotels. We will be the operator of the proposed property. Is this better? Does it? All right. Can you hear me? All right. Kate Busca with Provenance Hotels, we're the intended operator of the property. As Jeff mentioned, we've had the pleasure of coming to Madison and being part of this process over the last couple of years, and we're very excited to be here. We're an independent hotel operator and we really create handcrafted hotel properties that are very unique to their community, that are authentic and intentional. And that's definitely, you know, we felt like this process has been that and we're excited for what we have to show you. You know, our hotels are really rooted in the community and that's our intention here in Madison. We've had a really great opportunity to meet a lot of folks here in town and to partner with them along this process. Our hotels are intended for guests that are experiential travelers, so this is not necessarily just a place to lay your head. It's a place to meet the city, to feel engaged with the city and the community. And we do that through collaboration. Our guests really want a connection to the city where they're traveling. And so, we do that by partnering with people, whether they're retailers or makers in the city, or arts organizations, museums, or incredible F and B and food, food and beverage experiences. We really look to bring that in so that even if you stay with us for a night, you feel like you've been to that place. And certainly, this State Street and this particular block of State Street is a special place where- We have bike programs at our hotels, which are very, very popular, enable people to really drop their car with us. And if they drive, which a lot of our guests don't actually even drive, we do a lot of ride-sharing, but if they drive, bikes are very, very popular. So we're looking forward to having a bike valet at the hotel, so that locals visiting the restaurant or guests that are staying with us can kind of explore State Street. We want to be a jumping-off point for them for their downtown Madison experience, so...
Good evening, Ken Gallin, Metro Studio, KKD Architects. As Jeff had mentioned, we engaged in a two-year process with various neighborhood groups, stakeholders within the community, and probably developed no less than 12 different iterations of this design. When I look at the design that we have here, the design that was approved by UDC, the design that was approved by Landmarks, it truly was a collaborative effort with all of the community members involved. After determining that the restoration of the original 122 State Building was not possible, our team developed more than, like I said, more than a dozen different concepts to arrive at a design that you see here tonight that really addresses the difficulty of the site and works to preserve the scale and the historic building fabric along State Street. The site is extremely unique in that it has three frontages, each with different challenges. The proposed State Street design removes a six-story building from that frontage and replaces it with a site-sensitive four-story limestone building that embodies the traditional stone details and materiality sympathetic to the character of the street. This proposed design on State Street works to incorporate the two existing flanking 118 and 126 buildings as functional components of the overall hotel. We felt that by retaining these historic building components, the proposed design ensures that any structures that contribute to the character of the block are meaningfully preserved and repurposed from their current derelict state. While no less important, the Dayton and Carroll frontages required a slightly different approach. Located adjacent to some of the taller buildings within the Capitol District, the design locates the proposed height and density at the space that makes the most sense, which is at the Dayton-Carroll corner. The building design, in our mind, anchors this important corner and complements the adjacent building fabric by removing what was called the "skywalk to nowhere," joining to the adjacent parking ramp across the street. The proposed design, you know, really works to utilize materials and details that are inherent components to the surrounding architectural fabric of Madison. The design aims to mitigate any negative impact from the additional floors by utilizing horizontal cornices that create a strong base of the building, which references the adjacent properties. We've also incorporated multiple setbacks that are employed as the building ascends to make the top floors recede from the pedestrian environment below. The limestone and flame granite cladding is reminiscent of the notable masonry and stone buildings of the Capitol District. And then the building itself is crowned with a bronze metal entablature that recalls the bozart detailing that we see in a lot of the traditional architecture within the downtown area. In our mind, this design is much more than just a singular building. It's an urban intervention that's designed to enhance the existing fabric of a unique triangular block. The design addresses the challenges of retaining the historic context and scale of State Street while aiming to satisfy the necessary minimum hotel program. When complete, the project represents a new direction for the city of Madison, one that's rooted within its architectural traditions, but has an eye for the forward progress that the city is engaged within.
Okay, so the next speaker is Eric.
Yep. All right.
Yeah, thank you. Eric Nordin, Senate Holdings, owner developer. I'm just going to tell you a couple of things about how we're going to handle the guest arrival, the valet, and what we're doing on Carroll Street. The collaboration in the Carroll Street cul-de-sac has been really productive. We've had some good interactions with our neighbors, neighboring businesses that use the cul-de-sac. We have neighboring property owners that use the cul-de-sac. And we just want to make sure that we can create a guest arrival sequence in a valet area on Carroll Street that works well with our neighbors and works well in the cul-de-sac. We're looking forward to collaborating with the Concourse Hotel, which has its loading dock on Carroll Street. There are some shared vendors that we can arrange delivery at the same time, so that we can try to minimize truck traffic in the cul-de-sac. And after a lot of collaboration with traffic engineering and a presentation of some options to the Transportation Commission, the commission recommended what you see here, which is a couple of changes to Carroll Street. It's a widening of the sidewalk on our side of the street and a replacement of existing surface parking with a valet guest arrival area. The details of this, if people have more questions, I'm happy to answer those in a Q and A portion of the presentation, but just trying to keep it brief for you guys. So if you have something you want to know about this, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
All right. The next speaker is Franny. It's Franny here.
I'm Franny Ingebrithson. I live on Wisconsin Avenue. As a member of the CNI Steering Committee, I and others opposed this project. The June 20th letter of intent to the Director of Planning misinformed and made false claims in an attempt to prove that the proposed project met the required standards for a zoning map and height map amendment. In the Steering Committee's July 27th report, on pages eight through 16, members in opposition highlighted these inaccuracies and provided information that challenges the assertion that the project meets the necessary standards for approval. To receive a zoning map amendment for excess height in a planned development district, a proposal must meet four standards for approval. This project doesn't meet standard one. The excess height is compatible with the existing or planned character of the surrounding area, including but not limited to the scale, mass, rhythm, and setbacks of buildings and relationships to street frontages and public spaces. The context for standard one is the character, scale, mass, and rhythm of buildings located in the six blocks of State. The design team could not identify one building that was compatible with the mass and height of the proposed hotel. Instead, they looked in the opposite direction to the Concourse Hotel, buildings on the square, and the 100 and 200 blocks of West Washington. Until the downtown plan and height map were adopted, State Street's 19th and early 20th century buildings with their varied heights and architectural details had no overlay of protection. City residents overwhelmingly supported the height map, a proactive measure to preserve the six blocks of State that truly define the city's town and gown culture. The site of the proposed hotel has suffered from self-created blight, as property owners turned off the lights, locked the doors, and waited for an attractive offer. No-for-sale signs appeared, but people looking for dark areas to deal drugs, drink, and relieve themselves found the perfect spot on the block. If common council members ignore the staff report and its findings that this proposal does not meet the necessary standards, you will be giving a green light to other property owners to vacate their properties. They'll shut the door, turn off the lights, and add their bit of blight on other blocks of State. Every property will become a potential redevelopment site with the unfortunate outcome that the one, two, and three-story small historic commercial buildings will be demolished for larger developments. Enthusiastic supporters for this project referred to numerous benefits that the hotel will provide to nearby businesses and downtown residents. Please remember that the 300-room Drury Hotel with onsite parking and two restaurants will be one block away. There is no need for the city to be held hostage by an unspoken message that if the developers don't get the extra three stories, they'll walk away. Something needs to happen on this block, but the city should wait for a proposal that respects the height map and is compatible with the context of State Street. It's unfortunate that downtown Madison must take the brunt of all the issues surrounding the transient homeless, the drug dealers, the range of people suffering from various addictions, and the untreated mentally ill. A new hotel on the 100 block will not serve this problem. Our society must work harder to solve it. But it is probably likely that the move of these struggling people will move to a different block on State Street. Please reject the proposal before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jason. Jason supports the item.
Good evening. My name is Jason Elstrop, and I am the President of Downtown Madison Inc., and I am here speaking on behalf of both DMI and the Central Downtown Business Improvement District in support of this project. When you think of downtown Madison, when you think Madison in general, you think of State Street, you think of the Capitol, and you think of this intersection. It is the number-one-used pedestrian intersection, not just in the city of Madison, but in the entire state of Wisconsin. And unfortunately, over the last few years, we've seen a rise in crime. The statistics show that over the last year, we've seen as many crimes and arrests in July as we saw in all of 2017. Now, there are many different ways to tackle these issues, and DMI and our friends at the Bid and many other partners throughout the city are working very hard on these issues. And we have a five-pronged approach. First, we have to make sure all of the social services are there, provided for those that are vulnerable in that area. Second, we need to make sure the public policies are in place to make sure that everyone can succeed, and this is an open and inclusive area for everybody. Third, we need to make sure law enforcement is enforcing those public policies. Fourth, we need to have the correct environment and urban planning for the area. And fifth, most importantly for this hotel, is we need activation. This project, at the top of State Street, will activate this space. Currently, we have seven vacant storefronts, four of them on the 100 block of State Street and three on the Carroll and Dayton sides. And you can see that those are causing problems, and that is one of the reasons why crime is happening. And if you activate this with a hotel, as I know as a former hotelier, this will create 24-hour energy where the employees are watching out, guests are going in and out. And I will say, DMI supports both this project and the Drury project, because what it will do for the intersection at Carroll and Dayton, all of a sudden, you'll have 850 hotel rooms. The amount of energy that will happen, the activation that will be part of downtown, will be key to all the businesses in the area. Second, in a conversation we've had many times in discussions about, is about retail. Retail on State Street is not doing as well. In 2000, 50% of all businesses on State Street were retail. In 2017, DMI did a study, and it's 25%. Now, I'm not going to get up here and say that I can change everything with Amazon and how people are changing their habits. But I can tell you, from my experience at Hotel Red, if you build a product like this and like the Drury Hotel, it will send people to the shops. They will go to Von Foss and buy olive oil. They will go to the shoe store and buy shoes. They will go to Ian's Pizza and make a purchase of a macaroni and cheese pizza. And they will go to Michelangelo's right next door and buy a cup of coffee. That'll support the employment and help with the retail base on the street. And so for those two reasons, we feel that it is key that this project get built, for both retail in downtown Madison and on State Street, and for the activation of that area.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Lewin. Robert supports. Is Robert here?
I went to the University of Wisconsin, graduated in '74. I moved back to Madison about 30 years ago. I moved downtown about three years ago. I've always had the mustache, but in the last year, I've grown the beard because I was always confused for the mayor, and people would stop me on State Street and thank me for all the good things that the city does. So to the mayor, I say, "Thank you." The more I look into the proposed Provenance Hotel for the 100 block, the more excited I become. If you look at the properties that Provenance has around the country in cities much bigger than Madison, they just seem to go to a city and just get involved and try to match the city in energy and vibe. And I'm especially excited about this program for the 100 block. I don't know if I'd be excited this excited if they were looking at the 300 block or the 400 block, but the fact that this is on the 100 block really, I think, is key because of the six blocks of State Street. It is the even-numbered side of the 100 block that is in most disrepair. To say goodbye to that nondescript office building, that sketchy office building I never understood, say goodbye to that skyway in the back that I've never seen a pedestrian use, take some of the smaller storefronts and make it into a hotel at the anchor of State Street where State Street begins, I think is really important. I think it brings a couple of key things to our city. First of all, jobs. Constructing a hotel is good work, and then operating a hotel 24 hours a day, seven days a week is good work, too. It'll increase the city's tax base. It supports the goals of convention and tourism, to bring more people to Madison. I'm especially excited about having eyes on that street, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. You know, hotels don't have locks on their door because they are literally always open. And I can't think of a better place to have a 24/7 operation than 100 block of State Street and on that cul-de-sac on Carroll Street. These people are looking to put 40-some million dollars into our city, and I would point out, I don't believe they're asking for any TIF, any help from anybody. They're willing to do it on their own. They see a great future here, and I think we should be flattered and be excited about working with them. And taking out of the decrepit buildings, really, that's eyesore. If you ever have a guest to Madison and you want to walk him from the square up to the campus, did you ever notice how quickly you walk him on the 100 block? Because there really isn't much to show him. To put in a Provenance Hotel on this site would be a shining new anchor for the State Street corridor. So I urge the city council to get this built, and I thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Judy Craftsky. Judy supports. Is Judy here?
Okay, thank you. Like Bob, I testified before the Plan Commission, so the good news is I won't repeat my Plan Commission testimony, but I'll give you an idea of the things I said and what I heard that night. And first of all, I cited my historic preservation credentials, because I've lived downtown in historic homes for 25 years, and I led tours of that block and the buildings that you're all going to be discussing tonight. And I worked at 122 State Street, that funky office building that Bob just referred to. And I know this, I know that State Street is too long, and I learned that from my UW real estate professor, Jim Grasscamp. And he wasn't talking about the linear feet, he was talking about the experience of moving up State Street. And as you do it, the street kind of gives out once you cross Dayton. And I know this, I know that developers require a critical volume, they need a critical square footage to achieve feasibility. And the requested height variance has already been recommended by the Plan Commission, and that's really what's before you tonight. And these developers are not going to move forward without it. I also know the highest and best use of that cul-de-sac and the real estate around it has...
To put in a Provenance Hotel on this site would be a shining new anchor for the State Street corridor, so I urge the city council to get this built, and I thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Judy Craftsky. Judy supports.
Okay, thank you. Like Bob, I testified before the Plan Commission, so the good news is I won't repeat my Plan Commission testimony, but I'll give you an idea of the things I said and what I heard that night. And first of all, I cited my historic preservation credentials because I've lived downtown in historic homes for 25 years, and I led tours of that block and the buildings that you're all going to be discussing tonight. And I worked at 122 State Street, that funky office building that Bob just referred to. And I know this, I know that State Street is too long, and I learned that from my UW real estate professor, Jim Grasscamp. And he wasn't talking about the linear feet, he was talking about the experience of moving up State Street. And as you do it, the street kind of gives out once you cross Dayton. And I know this, I know that developers require a critical volume, they need a critical square footage to achieve feasibility. And the requested height variance has already been recommended by the Plan Commission, and that's really what's before you tonight. And these developers are not going to move forward without it. I also know that the highest and best use of that cul-de-sac and the real estate around it has not been achieved. And trust me, the highest and best use of that cul-de-sac is not trash cans in a sketchy alley. Other people at the Plan Commission spoke about the need, the essence of planning and the philosophy of planning, and the need for flexibility in plans in a growing and changing city. And then Alder Revere, spoiler alert, and you'll probably hear him tonight, spoke about the roles of the professional staff and the policymakers and how they work together in planning decisions. The real heroes at the Plan Commission meeting were the small businesses, the small business owners, the owners of Michelangelo's and Ian's, and the property owners on the west side of the street. I know the Milsteads were here earlier, but they didn't stay. Those people, the people who work and own on the street, they know the risks that are inherent in new projects, and they've seen a lot of projects on that street. But they still say they support this project, and they're willing to work with a future that has a few uncertainties rather than stick with the all-too-certain present that they live with right now. That 100 block of State Street needs help, and this is a bold, creative project. And if I can add anything new to the discussion, it's a memory that I have from the work that several of us, including Michael and Susan Schmitz, who's not here right now, the work that we did for several years to reconfigure and reposition the Leesalink Peace Park. It was never our intention to remove or replace any people who claimed that part of State Street. Our hope was to open up the space to all segments of the community, to families and students and older people, and to the homeless. And we knew we were successful the night that we showed our first movie outdoors. The people who were asleep in the park stayed, they stayed asleep, as we brought in a projector and speakers and our own seating and blankets. And if and when they awoke, they just joined all of us because we watched a Harry Potter movie. None of this is about exclusion of the people that we see, and I see every day in the 100 block of State Street. It's about a dream that we can have a different mix on the street, a safer, more comfortable environment on one of our iconic triangular blocks. And if this is the plan that we need to do it, let's bring it on. Thank you.
Thank you. The next registrant wishing to speak is the last one wishing to speak, and while he comes up, I'm going to read the names of all the other registrants. Al Fish is next. We have supporting, available to answer questions, Matt Prescott, Jeff Held, Sue Stark, Greg Frank, Byron Egan. Supporting, not wishing to speak, Kelly Prescott, Melissa Kaisers, Anna Stern, Ellen Despins, Kathy Baylor, maybe, Connie Barbara, Michael Zorch, Gregory Reed, Ryan Christensen, Carol Schaefer, Daniel Milstead, Maria Milstead, and Kurt Steggi, and my thanks to everybody who prints clearly in block letters.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Let's just talk really briefly about height, which is one of the issues that we've been focusing on. Early on, this project was a lot higher than what it is today, and as it has shrunk down to try and get closer to the downtown height limit, we have come pretty close on that back line. If we had a six-story building that had full floor-to-floor heights before you tonight, that six-story building could be 88 feet tall. Our building at the top of the eighth floor is 95 feet tall. The ninth floor is a recessed restaurant and bar that is practically invisible from the street. So we have squeezed that down, and it is not stories, but it is in feet, very close. Secondly, when you look at the context, one of the arguments that the Plan Commission and Urban Design Commission found compelling was this building is backed up against the Madison Concourse Hotel, which is 166 feet, 100 Wisconsin, 157 feet, 30 on the square, 128 feet. That triangular block fits up against some of the biggest buildings in downtown. So it is a unique circumstance. It is one that we tried to bring it down to be as close as we could to the intent of the downtown plan and still meet the business needs of the project. It also accomplishes a major thing in that we take the six-story building that goes all the way to State Street and reduce that down to three and four stories. So there's a significant reduction on that, as well as the removal of the pedestrian way. I think it's also important to note that this isn't necessarily a precedent. Two times, there have been exceptions to the downtown plan with the AC Hotel and with the Pressman for other adjustments, and both of those projects, NRS, had to go through a very rigorous process, working with the city staff, neighborhoods, and a collaborative effort to try and get the right project done. As you heard from the architects tonight, there were significant changes in that dialogue that brought us to this point where we have gotten largely the entire support of the retail and residential communities around State Street. I frankly haven't worked on very many projects where almost all the neighbors said, "Please build this." And so this is the situation we're in today. In addition, from a safety and security standpoint, when we talked to the Downtown Coordinating Committee, they've been struggling spending more than $100,000 a year with cameras and lights and police and other interventions on that cul-de-sac to try and turn it around from a safety and security standpoint, and nothing has really worked. We believe that on the ground, having this hotel in this location with three doors on Dayton Street, on the cul-de-sac, and on State Street, will really activate that area 24 hours a day. So from that standpoint, there is a safety and security aspect, and then finally, there's the economic development aspect is probably really compelling for our neighbors in the retail and restaurant world. And that is, this hotel with 130 rooms will probably bring in about 35,000 guests a year. And on average, they may spend anywhere from $70 to $100 apiece in that area. So the impact of that on the 100 and 200 blocks in what is really the art district of State Street with Overture and the Orpheum and Mimoka all there, and in the future, a new Historical Society of Development, also Kitty Corner, which I would predict at this point will be coming back to you for the maximum height limit, but in the Capital View statute. So this particular project is in the right place, it's the right time, it's a compelling need, and for what we need to see happen on the ground from a business standpoint, from a safety and security standpoint, and from a vitality as a tourism destination, this is the right project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of any of the speakers? Alder and Kemble.
I have a question for Eric. Could you go back to that Carroll Street slide? And for the record, I voted against this at the Transportation Commission. So I have a couple of questions. It looks like that has changed from the proposal at the Transportation Commission, which did not have that single parking space there. Is that a handicap?
This exhibit remains unchanged from the presentation at Transportation Commission.
But is that parking space gone now, right? Where there shows a white... I'm sorry. So we have one public loading, two hotel loading that are in front of the driveway, right? And no other parking on Carroll Street. Correct?
Correct.
So where are the cars going to be parked?
The valet operator will be removing the cars from the site and parking them in various parking decks.
Which ones?
We haven't confirmed which ones yet, but we are working on that. We're very comfortable with the condition that requires us to... There's a Plan Commission motion included a condition to provide letters of intent from the parking decks that will house the cars that will be coming to the hotel.
Okay.
So we're still working on it with those property owners, but we've had a pretty receptive response from five different property, excuse me, parking decks. There's a lot of excess capacity in the marketplace.
How many stalls are you looking for?
Looking for 80 spaces.
Okay. Well, my objection at Transportation Commission, and still today, is basically a private taking of a public space for where there used to be eight parking spaces, including a handicap parking space. There are now none, and the... What's called "public loading" is going to be very active for your valet parking, especially if the driveway is in use and the other loading areas is yours. So to me, especially without a plan and without knowing where those cars were going, where that... And the loss of the handicap parking space, especially on that side of the road, for people to access the businesses, not just your hotel, but the other businesses, there was a great concern to me. So I just wanted to clarify that I was against this. I'm not talking about the hotel or the project as a whole, but I think this is a bad plan. And that's all. And I need to go home because I'm just more than beat for many reasons, so, anyway.
Thank you. Alder and Rumel.
Thank you. One of the standards talks about that you can rezone to a PD if there's no other base zoning possible, and one of you talked about the 12 iterations. Can you explain to us who are not as knowledgeable about all those iterations? I mean, we saw the thing about how the height map, but how it is that you decided it couldn't fit under the existing six-story or whatever limit? Like, why? Nothing else would work except this? And what did you do to come to that conclusion?
Is your question financially with operation of the hotel, or are you asking the zoning question of which zoning district we would have utilized?
Well, yeah, I don't even know which zoning district I would probably ask Ms. Stoudt, but you probably know, Jeff, I'm sure. But the point of the standard was no other base zoning, it wouldn't fit the base zoning district that you would need to rezone to PD.
Correct. So the site is currently zoned downtown core DC with the six-story height map that has been adopted in the zoning code. So as part of the downtown plan, in addition to the zoning code, there's a process included within that to modify the... To exceed the height in the downtown height map through the process that we're essentially using, which is the PD process. So there's a specific provision within the zoning code that states that if a property owner within the downtown height map district is looking to exceed the height, that the PD is throughout to follow.
I mean, I understand there's a process not to fit it, but I'm just asking about the iterations you went to, that fitting it didn't seem to be the answer for your project.
And maybe I can let Ken talk about where we started with the initial drawings and how we sort of modified that to fit within the zoning code.
So there were a couple of key components that came up during the process that, from the original iteration to where we are now, and actually, if we go to State Street, one of the main ones, the initial plans did not originally include retention of 118 and 126. So those were being removed. And so that was very clear from all of the stakeholders that we met with, that those were seen as contributing buildings to the character of State Street. So one of the main changes that we made was revising the design, removing the four-story construction that was going to happen at those areas so that we could retain the two buildings that flank the proposed new four-story portion on State. That was a major change. As Alan Fish had described, there were also major changes in that, I do believe, the original iteration was a 12-story design, which was deemed to be just out of character, not able to be reconciled with the historic fabric. It was also a much modern, much more modern design. A lot of the iterations that we went through were moving away from a modern, contemporary design to something that was much more contextual, not just in terms of its materiality, but in terms of its height and in terms of its articulation. And so that's really what led us to the solution of this four-story stone component that unified the project on all three elevations, got us... And as Urban, I think as the Landmarks Commission pointed out, was more sympathetic to the adjacent landmark building as well, and that was seen as a positive move as well. So moving away from kind of a more, for lack of a better term, avant-garde, modern design to a more contextual design that utilizes materiality that's present in the historic building fabric, that was a big part of the iterative process. So it was a combination of retaining historic building fabric and integrating it into the overall hotel development, lowering the height and mitigating the massing in a manner that's more sympathetic and more in line with the grain and the rhythm of State Street, and also retain... And like I'd said before, integrating these components, these derelict buildings which are really underutilized at this point in time, I think they're actually both vacant, and having them as active parts of the hotel, and also to not go into a facadeism, actually retaining the building. So it's just not just holding on to the front facade, we're actually retaining that section that's on State Street for both of those properties. Those were the major, I would say, the major changes. And so the nuances of the building materiality and feel and moving to this contextual design took a lot of iterative turns for us to really start to understand it. And from the design team's perspective, we spent a lot of time, we actually drew elevations of these two blocks, and we're constantly looking at our design in context with the historic building fabric that's surrounded, not just on this side of the street, but also the other side of the street, and conversely, the same operations we're performing on Dayton and Carroll as well. And I think that helped us get it to this architecture, away from where it was initially, which was much more glass, much more contemporary, and just not really this scale of resolution. It had no stone, I mean, it was metal panel, glass, it was all, you know, modern material, whereas this is, you know, more stone, more of a tectonic that's reminiscent of masonry traditions. So I think that is probably a broad overview of that whole iterative process that we went through.
Thank you. I have one more fine point about that. So when you heard Alder Kemble talk about the drop-off, and I know we discussed this at Landmarks, but did, on either Dayton or Carroll, did you ever look at taking some of your own land to do a co-share or a drop-off function on your own land as opposed to using public right-of-way?
We did, and that was a request of the staff with Transportation, and they actually told us where, you know, how they would want to try and configure that. And so this very short frontages, and we're at a corner condition, so they pushed those entry, ingress and egress points back off of Dayton and Carroll, the Dayton and Carroll corner. And what it did was, it basically created, made this... Instead of having an active storefront condition, which is more reminiscent and indicative of the historic storefront condition, we ended up with a huge blank car park under the building. The other thing is because of the configuration of the building and where we need to locate a core, that also is not just the core for the vertical circulation, it also provides the lateral stability for the building, that driveway would have to go right through that component of construction. So there were engineering challenges with that. We were also, when doing that, we were increasing the frequency of vehicular and pedestrian interactions. In this proposed solution, which we had before us, car does not cross the sidewalk. We have, we do have a loading zone that's going to be used, but it's not used as much as, you know, it's not like constant traffic for it. And it would typically be utilized in times that are not a prime arrival time for the hotel so that we don't, the hotel operator is able to manage that traffic. When we went through the port-co-share, you were actually encouraging cars and people to interact with each other more, which actually increases the potential for a negative interaction between pedestrians and vehicular traffic. So that, in combination with the engineering difficulties, I think we saw staff basically say, "Thank you for looking at that," but then I think we moved to the solution that you see here before you this evening.
Thank you.
Alder and Aaron.
Thank you. I'm on the Downtown Coordinating Committee, and during the two years that I've been on the committee, I would say that the conversation there and discussion has been predominantly about the situation at the top of State Street. People have a lot of ideas, people who are employees. ideas, people who are employees in that area, who are business owners, pedestrians, and so on, come to the committee with serious issues pertaining to that. Prior to my membership on the committee, and I think other people here, other Alders as well, have participated in a series of discussions in the three or four years ago at Downtown, at DMI, about what to do about the top of State Street. A lot of people of goodwill participated in that, and during that time, additional video cameras have been installed, the number of police patrols in that area have increased, and to date, the situation has not improved and many believe have gotten worse. Coming into this meeting, I asked the lieutenant who's in charge of patrol for the Central District about the overtime costs for that particular area. And he wrote back and said that to date, that actually wasn't to date, it was to July 15th, there's about $13,000 in overtime costs just for this portion of one block. And now we have something which is really the most plausible means of addressing that, which is a major hotel with-
Excuse me. Are you asking a question?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
We don't have a motion.
What?
We were doing questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Let me go to Alderman Palm, and then I'll get a motion and come back to you.
Okay, sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Alderman Palm?
Greetings. So, earlier in the slideshow, there was a lot of, aside from the Portland ice cream, a lot of streetscapy, sort of vibrant things. And so, the question I have is, how are you activating the streetscape? I mean, look at that cafe stuff. And especially when on State Street, I mean, you, you're following the line of the buildings, and it just seems to me that some sort of engagement through the, the physical aspects of the building could have been useful.
So, we do have a couple more slides that I think will help answer your question. So the Downtown Coordinating Committee had asked to look at exactly what we were doing with the sidewalk areas, because as you said, the building goes up to the property line. So there's a question of how we're going to interact with the sidewalks and the street. So on the Carroll Street side, which you see there, we will have a valet stand and a valet sign. So there will be quite a bit of activity on the Carroll Street side, which we view as the valet drop-off area. And there will also be, on the Dayton Street side, a primary entrance for the hotel on Dayton Street, which currently is a very inactive place for interaction with the building and the sidewalk. Other than the addition of the entry, we're not proposing any changes on Dayton Street, so the parking will, will remain the same. And then on State Street, we are looking to include a sidewalk cafe to serve the restaurant that will be in the hotel. So we, we hope to liven up that area in front of the hotel, which is not very active now. So we think the combination of those three things, adding really three primary entrances, one on State, one on Dayton, and one on Carroll, having the 24/7 valet operation and interaction, having a lot of pedestrian activity on, on Carroll Street with pedestrians going to the parking ramp to the square, we think that'll bring a lot of activity to the block.
I mean, that, no, you're bringing a lot of movement. The only thing that seems to be activity is this. I mean, you, no one ever says, "Come to our street, we have valet parking stands." It's, it's the vibrancy of, you know, tables and restaurants. So how, there's, are there any interaction between the, the tables that just sit on the curb side and what you're doing inside?
You're right, yeah. So, good question. I mean, I think the real energy of the project is what happens in the building, and how does that spill out onto the sidewalk and activate the streetscape and engender this feeling of pedestrian sense of place and all these goals that we have from an urban planning perspective. Other than the three entrances that Jeff mentioned, which will make it so that pedestrians can get into the building on all three street frontages, we have a lot of new storefronts. The idea with the storefronts is that when the weather is nice, that they will be open. They're intended to be operable. The, the hope is that there's almost a blurred line between the public and the private space, and that the energy of the sidewalk comes into the hotel, the energy of the hotel goes out. But I, I think, maybe what you're driving at is one thing, I don't know that we've explained, there is a full-service restaurant and bar on the first floor of the space, as well as the guest arrival, and a lobby area, which we propose to be a very active place for local people to network and connect. So, we, we see this as a very active lobby environment, and the hope is that people will see it, hear it, feel it, and want to be inside the building as they walk down the sidewalk.
So let me, let me ask you more questions about that connection. So you're saying, do the, these fold-sized windows there convert into doors of some sort?
Yes.
And is that on, which, which, which frontages are those windows on?
All three frontages. I won't tell you it's 100% of them. I don't think it is on, but I think it's, right now, maybe 80% of the storefronts are operable. I don't know, Ken, if you can comment on that, something in that range? Yes. You know, one of the things that we, you know, in our two years of being up here, just seeing how good weather infects the Madison area, we noticed that there's a really strong desire to open up that ground floor condition. And Eric said, all of the public spaces for the project are locate, with the exception of the rooftop bar, are located at this level for the exact reason that you're getting to, which is to have an active programmatic presence at the ground floor, which we also saw as a very traditional expression of good urbanism. If you've been to, if you've had a chance to visit any of the provenance hotels, you'll note that their ground floor lobbies are public spaces. They're not conceived as just a place that you go if you're checking into the hotel. They typically, in addition to the restaurant and bar programs, they will incorporate a grab-and-go coffee-type bakery place as part of the program. All of the things are to encourage interaction.
So let's, let's zero in on here. So presumably, the State Street side is your restaurant component. So there's the, there'd be, there'd be tables at the window and when you're able to open it. So what, what, and then you said there's stores, or what do you, what do, like at that pretty prominent corner, what, what do you imagine is in that storefront?
So the restaurant program actually bleeds through. And if Bashar was here, I think he'd be able to speak to the fact that his intention is that everywhere in that lobby is a food and beverage opportunity. It's not just a, yeah.
But if you had stores there, you're not, you're not buying purses and coffee?
Yeah, there's no retail.
There's no retail? Okay, so.
So the intention with the lobby is really, it's not a waiting room, it's a living room. So, people are coming, they're sitting in the lobby, they're engaging, they're walking through. So whether the, whether it's clement or inclement, we, those windows will draw you in. And so we really try and engineer spaces where people can come in and meet and connect, and we have activations, whether we're bringing in a pop-up retail event that's happening, or we're doing an, you know, a daily activation in the lobby to give that energy.
So, so the entire first floor, with the exception of maybe offices and obviously elevators and stuff, and bathrooms, is, is an open concept?
Yeah. So the lobby, we don't, the front desk is not the star of the lobby. You know, it's like your, it's like your family room, where, you know, I'm in the corner and I'm cooking dinner because it's an open kitchen, and you're sitting on the couch and you're checking your email. I mean, it's really a space where multiple activities are going on. So yes, open concept. We might have an art, you know, pop-up in one corner and, you know, a, a bar serving drinks, or drinks coming from the F&amp;B space, and you can sit there and, with your friend and grab a drink as you're having a meeting. So very much multiple activations in it.
Thank you very much.
No further questions, thank you. Alderman Vrevere, you were gonna make, excuse me, Alderman King?
No.
Alderman Vrevere, were you gonna make a motion on this?
I could.
Who was gonna make the motion? We need a motion.
Second.
Is that a motion Alderman Baldwin to adopt?
Yes.
Thank you. And it's now my pleasure to go to Alderman Ehrens. I just gotta say, Alderman Ehrens, I hope you take this with a good humor, which is, you oftentimes lead in with very, very long predicates to your question. And I was just marveling at how long this, it was a record. But, but in any case, I apologize. The floor is yours. And I'm sorry for the interruption.
Okay. So I was saying that, that the efforts over the past four years by committees, by civic organizations like DMI, like the police, who, as I mentioned, has spent, well, have spent $13,000 on overtime alone by July of this year, has done little to address the problem at the top of State Street. And just by the presentations that we've had thus far, I think we get some flavor of the level of activity that would be generated at this site, which would have, I believe, a very positive effect. The, what is kind of frustrating to me in terms of a lot of this discussion about the height of the building is that the height of the building is largely a concern, I mean, of the birds here, of helicopters. We're not at the eighth and ninth and 10th floor of these buildings. For us as policymakers, for our constituents, for the other people who have to work and live in that area, the concern really is at the ground floor. And at the ground floor is where we have these issues. I mean, we also have an issue with, that this building would eliminate one of the ugliest buildings in the city at 122 State Street, and replace it with something that is potentially an excellent building. But beyond that is the fact that, in addition to the crime problems and everything else on Carroll Street, how that has leaked over to the rest of the 100 block, and what we have is a steady turnover of many marginal businesses that come and go, and with a few build, a few businesses that are hanging on. So I think that in terms of the, the practical consideration of what we want here as opposed to what actually exists, the positives here greatly outnumber the negatives. And I wish I could say it's just positive, and we don't even need to look at it, but the negatives are so outstanding here that I think we have to consider it, and I've considered it, and I'm gonna very happily vote for this measure.
Thank you. Alderman Vrevere?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to just clarify that the motion before us is clearly that the common council find that all of the numerous and various standards are met, and that the council concurs on the recommendation of the Plan Commission to approve the zoning amendment with all of the various conditions as recommended by the Plan Commission. I just wanted to confirm that, that we have made those findings, that the standards are met as part of this motion to start off with. At the, at the top, I want to address the issue, and I think it's a very important one, of the Planning Division's professional staff recommendation that's before us tonight. I can count on less than one hand the number of times that I have opposed the Planning Division recommendation for a proposal downtown in all of the many years I've been honored to serve in this chamber. I know that all of you, as I do, take the obligation that we have to, to work with the standards set by law in our zoning code very, very seriously, and absolutely respect the tremendous work that our professional planning staff does. So, I take very seriously that obligation. As I say, I know all of you do as well. And with that said, I, notwithstanding that, do recommend that each of you support the motion before us, and that is to recommend that, to all of you, that we do approve this very, very transformational and significant proposal for the downtown. I worked with this development team on and off, and I say that because at their volition, they've at times not been as actively engaged, and not over the three years because of other projects that the developers are working on. But about three years ago is when I first was introduced to this proposal in its original form. I want to say that it, it has absolutely significantly improved over those approximately three years. The design progression itself has been significant. The development team, and especially the designers on the team, have listened intently to the recommendations of the various reviewing bodies here in municipal government, particularly the Landmarks Commission and the Urban Design Commission. And they have listened, I think, intently to the community, particularly through the Neighborhood Association, Capital Neighborhoods Incorporated, and the Steering Committee that CNI created, of which we heard from two of its members tonight in the public hearing. The bottom line for me is that we cannot wait for something to happen at the top of State Street. We need to act today. We need to act immediately to do everything we can to improve the environment at the top of State Street. I won't go into the details tonight, but many of you know, and Alderman person Ehrens already spoke to it, and it's been certainly testified to during the public hearing. But city government, the public sector generally, the private sector to be sure, has invested tremendous amounts of energy and resources into trying to improve the environment at the top of State Street, what arguably is really the most important street in our, in our state, connecting the flagship university to the state capitol and vice versa. And this proposal will help us, I think, in a very significant way to deal with those environmental challenges that we faced year in and year out for far too long now at the top of State Street. And by the way, I don't want to go into the details, but when I say the top of State Street challenges, I don't mean homeless people sleeping there tonight. I mean behavioral activities that are absolutely criminal in nature in many respects. I mean, open-air drug dealing that occurs on a daily basis, and that sort of thing. I don't want anyone to take those comments to mean that homeless aren't welcome on the Capitol Square and the top of State Street. That's not what I'm referring to. What I'm referring to are very significant behavioral concerns that I think all of you are well aware have gone on for far too long at the top of State Street. There has been overwhelming support, those of you that serve on the Plan Commission, my three colleagues here tonight that serve also as Plan Commissioners, saw it for hours and hours, and heard it for hours and hours last Monday night at the Plan Commission public hearing on this proposal. But there has been tremendous support from, from stakeholders in the greater State Street area. I cannot think of another time that so many retailers have contacted me personally, and moreover, have, have spent hours at a public hearing to speak to a State Street issue. It's been many years since that's been the case, but that was the case at the Plan Commission last week. Retailers, in many respects, are hanging by a thread on State Street, particularly those that engage in traditional retail that's not food and drink oriented. And I know so many of them, and the conversations I've had with them, are hoping that this proposal, and one just across the street at the site of the Downtown Education Center campus of MATC, with the 315 hotel rooms there that the Plan Commission approved last week, will mean a very important influence in a positive way on their bottom line. week will mean a very important influence in a positive way on their bottom line. The economic development of this proposal, as well as the proposal for the other hotel in this area, I think is unprecedented in nature and will make a tremendous difference for retailers, large and small, no matter what area they're involved in, in, in the core downtown area. I said earlier that I don't take lightly the professional staff recommendations that we oppose this proposal and place it on file. It was difficult me, for me to frankly stand at the Plan Commission hearing last week and look at the professional planners in the eyes and say that I disagree with their professional opinion. But obviously, that's what we're all elected to do, is to interpret the standards as we will. I think it is incumbent upon us tonight, as part of this motion and our consideration of this, to explain why we believe through this motion that all of the various standards are met, particularly those important standards for height and access of that allowed in the downtown height map in the zoning code. Plan Commission Vice Chairperson Brad Cantrell spent a tremendous amount of time after he had made the motion to recommend adoption of this to the council at that meeting last week, setting forth a record that clearly states why he believes the motion that he made, which the Plan Commission agreed to, does call for the standards being met in all respects. I think it's important, as I say, that as we consider this action tonight and vote as individuals this evening, that we, we clearly find each and every one of us that each of the standards are met. I say that largely because I am very concerned about precedence. Many people spent a lot of their time and talent developing the downtown plan and working on the rewrite of the zoning code, including many of my colleagues here. I do not want the action tonight, which I'm asking all of you to take, to in any way, shape, or form be seen as attacking the integrity of the downtown plan that the council adopted in 2012. A lot of time was spent debating those height map limits. A lot of time was spent debating whether or not there should be an allowance made to the height map. The policymakers decided we would allow a plan development rezoning application to be considered, which is what we have before us tonight. So in terms of precedent, yes, if the council concurs on the recommendation of the Plan Commission and the other reviewing bodies, this will be one of the rare times that we have approved additional height through the plan development district in the downtown. It will be the third time. The other times, though, I would argue, were, were much more minor, including especially the AC Hotel, had a very small additional height that the council allowed with that proposal. This is three stories technically, and those three stories, I think, caused a lot of concern for folks. You heard it tonight in the public hearing through, by my friend Franny Ingebergson, one of the members of the Neighborhood Association Steering Committee, where she believes, as well as several of her colleagues on the Steering Committee, that the standards are not met. They agree with the staff recommendation and analysis. Again, we agree to disagree on that point. But I want it to be made known, and I think the staff report that we have before us tonight makes it clear to future development proposals and their proposers that we do take the height limits very seriously, that we do not believe that this sets a precedent, that our action that I anticipate will take approving this important development downtown is precedent-setting. In my estimation, without going through the legal standards, as I said, I'd refer people to the Plan Commission record on that and, and, and the motion made at the Plan Commission and the makers' clear record that was set there. But in, in summary, the reason why I believe this should not be seen as precedent-setting and why the height map standards are, are met is largely because of the very specific nature of this flat iron block and its close proximity to the Capitol Square. So the specific location and relationship to the square, and I would say to a lesser extent the challenges of the site, but it is the reason why, in, in very short summary, why I believe that the standards for approval should be met tonight by the council and why this is not precedent-setting. I want to conclude by not only thanking everyone that labored hard on this, on both sides of the issue, over the last several years, especially my constituents that volunteer their time and talent serving the Neighborhood Association Steering Committee, and that Steering Committee report you have in your, in your packet tonight was extremely impressive. The pros and cons laid out, I think, something like 15 or 16 pages worth of work summarizing their many meetings. But I want to thank, too, the development team for their patience, and I do want to thank absolutely the city staff that worked hard on this. There are over 70 conditions before us tonight as part of the Plan Commission recommendation. Some added by the Plan Commissioners last week. The vast majority, though, drafted by staff. So I want to thank the staff for their help and input on this, not only the Planning Division, but also the Traffic Engineering Division that had a dialogue with the development team about the particular challenges of, of parking and traffic with this proposal and how to deal with the North Carroll Street cul-de-sac. But again, in summary, I, I absolutely urge your support for this proposal because it will help us significantly deal with the environmental concerns at the top of State Street, the blighted conditions at the top of State Street, and we simply can't wait for something positive to happen there with the future development proposal and hope that that comes someday. We have to take action tonight and allow this to move forward for the greater good of the downtown and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman King.
I'm, I'm just gonna say ditto to all that because there's really nothing I could add from a Plan Commissioner perspective, but I should almost accuse myself as a native of Portland. And you know, my license plate is PDX, and I know the mayor does not like that, but sorry. I take great pride every time my home city is mentioned for benchmarking by all of our various committees and including this one. But I would just like to point out that I have stayed at the Sentinel in Portland. I remember the pillow menu. That's the only thing I remember, to be honest, because, never mind, I won't tell you why, condition. I have had lunch with my mom at the Heathman, I've eaten at Jake's, and I really, really think that my exceptional food and beverage experience depends on you importing salt and straw ice cream, as shown in the slide. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Aronson.
Thank, thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. My, my first legal job in Madison was right up the street here at 16 North Carroll Street. And I mean, even though I haven't lived downtown, I, I've worked downtown my, my whole career. I, you know, lately, I've, I've chaired the Downtown Madison Inc. Board. I currently chair the Library Foundation Board, which is near this. And this just seems to me like, like, like it's really a good idea for downtown in this place, in, in this location. At the, at the state of the, DMI, state of the downtown last week, somebody described Madison as, look, we're kind of at the juncture of from being a big, little city, we're now dealing with usually being a little, big city. And I think, I think this is part of that. I think I, while I, I respect, I mean, obviously, the, the capital height limits are kind of sacrosanct, and, and, and I, I respect the height limits in the downtown plan, but, you know, this is the way our city is going. Our city is growing for, for all the reasons we want density and activity in the core areas of our city. There's really no more core area of the city than the top of State Street. And I just, I strongly support this, this proposal and urge everyone to do the same. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Rumel.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess everybody is talking about how great a use a hotel would be, and I don't disagree with that at all. I think, for all the reasons stated, it could do a lot to help that part of State Street, help the businesses. And I think that we've heard that a lot, but that's not really one of our standards, unfortunately. It's not that it will stop light at the top of State Street. It's not a standard before us. Just want to make clear. And so there are at least seven standards, so I want, if, if, as Alder Rivera asks, that we agree to all of them, let's make sure we know what they are. So I tried to ask about the first standard, about whether any, why it can't meet the base zoning, and the answer was, well, we were at 12 stories and we reduced it, and it's better now. But the base zoning says six stories, so they never said they tried six stories and why it couldn't work and they needed to do something different. Another standard is, that strikes me, is the one that Alder Kimball raised, which was the traffic or parking demands. And at some point, we have to acknowledge, we're giving up paid parking and the street right-of-way for private use. We've done it before, but that seems to me, the standard is, I mean, you can maybe say you can live with it, and, and then it is rather, as the current word is, unique, that there's no onsite parking, but I hope that the hotel does their diligence to determine if that is viable. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, we had the little Baldwin Hotel on, on Baldwin that has no parking, so I can't say I haven't supported a little hotel with no parking, but it's something that certainly some people will drive, and we, we need to make sure that those that come that way can be, can be managed. Another one is the standard E, the architectural standards, and staff did a good job of raising the nine stories doesn't fit, and they, they made a request to Plan Commission, which was added, about the articulation of upper stories that wasn't really discussed here, but there will be more windows added that would definitely improve the inside view outside and just what you see from the street. So I think, you know, that was, you know, an improvement. Another standard that I guess really strikes me is the standard H, where it kind of comes down to is the excess, excess height compatible. And, and it has a couple, like, parts to it. It's, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but it's on page nine of the staff report. And, and it's basically, you have to agree to all the conditions here to say that it's met, and I, I struggle with that one. The first one is the excess height is compatible with the existing or planned character of the surrounding area. So you can make the argument that buildings further away are taller, but the ones that are, I guess, in front of us are the, the immediately adjacent ones. And so part of the, the downtown plan was that, that State Street would be four stories. And the developers did a very fine job of changing that presentation part of their plan, and I did, in fact, vote for it at Landmarks, and it was about 1,000 times better than the earlier iteration, maybe even 100,000 times better, because the other one wouldn't get approved. This one might, right? And what it did is it gave breathing room to the landmark buildings. It also apparently saved them, they were under consideration for demolition. But, but helping make that State Street character, giving it a really good presence, isn't the same thing as the totality of a building that is a nine story. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that when I voted for the landmark saying it wasn't, saying, well, and, and the staff report kind of hints that somehow because Landmarks voted for it, that the Plan Commission might find the project meets the standard for additional height. The Landmarks Commission did not take up the height. I was very kind of clear and maybe even a little sharp with some of the registrants who were talking only about things that we did not have before us. We only had whether it was so large or visually intrusive as to adversely affect the historic character of the adjacent landmarks. And, you know, unanimously, we said it did not because they, they changed the, the proposal. So I just want to, just make sure that you all are agreeing to all those things. I'm not sure I'm there. I think I could maybe live with the traffic stuff, although I don't really like it, but I'm not really convinced, and they didn't really tell me why it was the unique configuration of these three streets meant that the building could only be nine stories, it could only meet this PD classification. Because I think to me, that's the crux of, the crux of it. So, you know, higher quality, that's a standard that's so subjective. I mean, yeah, it's a very attractive building. And, you know, I don't like telling people just to chop a story off. They always have a reason why they can't, but is there a reason why it couldn't meet, you know, the downtown plan and still be successful? And I didn't hear a reason that it couldn't yet. And so I, I probably, I'm not going to be able to support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call on the next speaker, Alderman Ballas, could you come take the chair? I just want to apologize. When this day started out, I've got, had one meeting between the beginning of the morning and noon tomorrow. I've now got five, and I've got to go prepare for a couple of them, so I'm not sure how much longer I'll be here. The next speaker is Alderwoman, and, and by the way, that doesn't, I was hoping to stay through item 12 here. Obviously, my position on that has not changed. Alderwoman Zellers.
I'm on the Plan Commission, and full disclosure, I voted against it at the Plans, Plan Commission. I, I really agree that it has improved and that it can do some good things in this area. As many of you know, I pass by that block every day, usually two, three, four times a day. So I am very familiar with, with that block. And there are some empty storefronts, largely, well, at least in part due to the owner having kicked out the, the businesses in some of those, in some of those storefronts. So it, it in part created some of the lack of activity or lack of businesses. The reason why I voted against this at the Plan Commission and why I will vote against it here is I just simply do not agree that the conditions that we need to judge this on have been met. I, I basically agree with the staff report that the proposal doesn't meet the rezoning standards. Alder Rumel mentioned several of the things, but I'm just gonna read a couple more of the things that particularly resonated with me. The Plan Development District, this is one of the standards. Plan shall coordinate architectural styles and building forms to achieve greater compatibility with surrounding land uses and create an environment of sustained aesthetic desirability compatible with existing or intended character of the area and statement of purpose of the PD district. And the Planning Staff said, the Planning Division does not believe that the proposed plan development meets the standard for approval. The nine-story building is fundamentally inconsistent with both the existing and intended character of the flat iron block bounded by State Street, West Dayton, and North Carroll, and the majority of the buildings in the immediate context, and is three stories taller than the maximum recommended by the downtown plan, as well as being 19 feet taller. The nine-story portion of the building would now set the backdrop, this resonated with me, the backdrop for State Street and substantially increase the building mass along West Dayton and North Carroll Street. Another one mentioned by Alder Rumel is, when applying the standards to an application for height in excess of that allowed, no application for excess height shall be granted by the Plan Commission unless it finds that all of the following conditions are present. One is the excess height is compatible with the existing or planned character of the surrounding area, including but not limited to the scale, mass, rhythm, and setbacks. Staff said they do not believe that the excess height proposed is compatible with the existing or planned character of the properties immediately surrounding the subject property, all of which front onto State Street. And I think this is significant. Both the 10-story building at 30 West Main Street, 30 on the square, constructed in 1960- 10-story building at 30 West Main Street, 30 on the square, constructed in 1964, and 13-story Concourse Hotel, 1973, were considered when the recommendation in the downtown plan were developed and adopted, including the recommended heights for the 100 block of State Street. Staff does not feel that stepping the proposed mass back on State Street justifies the additional height proposal on Dayton and Carroll Street. And then, as Alder Rumel mentioned, there is also the standard under this, "The excess height allows for a demonstrated higher-quality building than could be achieved without the additional stories." And again, quoting Planning Staff, they say, "Planning Staff also does not believe that the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed building results in a higher-quality building than could be achieved without the additional stories." So, that summarizes pretty well where I am on this. I do agree that there could be some good things that would come out of this, but bottom line is, I'm going to be voting against it, simply because I can't vote for it, because I don't think it meets the standards.
Thank you, Alder Zellers. Aldo Carr?
Thank you. I was on the Planning Commission, and I can tell you that the conditions that we came up with was not fast and furious. I think that we had a long discussion on it. And I'm going to support this. And I do agree with Mike Viver. But, let me just say this, to sum it all up. Pass me the defibrillator, so I can save 100 block of State Street.
Aldo King? No? Nobody's on the queue for discussions? No? All right, we'll come to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no?
No.
Oppose, say no?
No.
Two noes. Okay, the motion passes.
And I'd like to record this.
Yes, please. All right. So, can I get the motion now on item number six? Five, I mean, sorry.
Five.
Yes.
Item 5, item 52999, for the demand of applications.
A schedule of assessment for Shepherd Terrace, Chamberlain Avenue, Van Heist Avenue, and Mason Street Assessment, District 2018.
Any second?
Okay.
Thank you. So...
He's going to leave me hanging, this one.
Yeah, we have registrants. So, we have a couple of registrants here. The first registrant is Krone Ingolman. Krone opposes and wishes to speak. Is Corinne here?
Corinne?
No? All right. So, the second speaker is Phillips Rowe. Phillips Rowe? Phillips Rowe is not here. All right, the next one is Jacob. Jacob Mosley, he's gone home, too. All right. The last person is Darcy. The Darich? Daddy here?
She says she's not.
Yeah, this doesn't wish to speak. Okay. Seems like there are no...
Good afternoon. I have enacted a... My name is Bradley Burt. I am a veteran of the 10th Mountain Division. I'm pre-9/11. I was a part of the Republican Guard in Haiti. I was there when Jimmy Carter and Bertrand Harris Steed had the stand-down. I was one of the members of that Republican Guard that enacted the peacekeeping mission. I'm one of the few veterans that you'll see that has a humanitarian ribbon and also has an Armed Forces Expeditionary. I'm just as much war as I am peace. I've asked the American Legion to enact a Peace Corps downtown. We need a global-local reciprocity for these veterans. We have 22 veterans killing themselves every day. I've...
No, this is item number five, sir.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I apologize.
No problem.
48.
Oh, okay.
Should we try?
48.
48, we didn't get there yet.
I apologize.
Have you filled out a form? You can fill it out now. Yeah, Bradley, right? Is that his name? Okay. All right. So, on item five, there are no registrants. Any discussions? Debates? All right, we'll come to a vote.
Can I just ask, I know, I'm just going to ask for a patient, Mr. Phillips, if you can just give a very, very quick, short version on the record about what this proposal is?
Okay, before you tonight is item five on the agenda. That's the reconstruction of Shepherd Terrace, Chamberlain Avenue, Van Heist Avenue, and Mason Street. It's a little group of streets located east of Hoyt Park and north of Regent Street. It's a $1.9 million project. Includes a new curb and gutter, new pavement, includes public, replacement of public utilities, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water main. All this is fairly typical. What isn't typical here might be the situation with the sidewalk, and I'll get into that in a little bit of detail. So, what we have here is an area that is developed with some properties having sidewalk and some not. It's a bit unusual. Before you, at your place, is a drawing. It has red, blue, and kind of a dashed green on the drawing. Does everybody have that in front of them, perhaps? So, the red on this drawing is proposed sidewalk. The blue is existing sidewalk to be replaced, and the dashed green is existing sidewalk to remain. A lot of the neighbors came to the Board of Public Works not in opposition of the overall project as much as in opposition to the sidewalk component of the project. This, when we, when staff looked at this, we had, we had some choices to make here as far as formulating a recommendation. One would be to remove the sidewalk is there, that's there, and have no sidewalk in this area at all. That's contrary to our mission. The, another option would be to leave it all as is, which is kind of odd with gaps in the sidewalk. And the third option would be, was to fill in the sidewalk gaps. Initially, staff had proposed sidewalk on the streets you see here, but also on Chamberlain Avenue and Van Heist Avenue as well. After hearing public comments and investigating the situation with the sidewalk further, we decided to change the recommendation to sidewalk on the west side of Shepherd Terrace and on the south side of Mason Street. If you look at that sidewalk that I just mentioned, it kind of, it creates generally a route on one, a sidewalk route on one side of the street, from Kendall Avenue down to, down to Francis Street, which is not, Franklin Street, I'm sorry, which is not labeled on the, on the easterly side of this piece of paper. You look at that total length, that's 1,400 feet along the west side of Shepherd Terrace and the south side of Mason Street. 1,400 feet. 550 feet of that is, is proposed sidewalk, that's 38% of the entire length. 850 feet of that is existing sidewalk. I will point out that some of that existing sidewalk has to be removed and replaced, quite a bit of it, actually. But, as far as the amount of new sidewalk within that area that we're proposing sidewalk, it's 38% of the sidewalk is required to fill in the, in the gaps. Sidewalk, I'm going to be brief here. Sidewalk, we feel is beneficial. It provides a safe place for pedestrians, an alternative to walking, walking in the street. The sidewalk assessments will be, the property owners will be benefited by, I expect anyway, to be benefited by a 50% reduction in the cost of the new sidewalk, not the reconstructed sidewalk, the new sidewalk, using a, the Safe Routes Grant that is in the capital budget. And we've done that the last few years. And that, again, that pays, that's kind of an incentive to install a new sidewalk, where property owners get 50% paid back. So, does that cover your questions or comments?
Aldo Pah?
Yeah. On the question of, so, I guess I have two questions. One, this is all within existing right-of-way?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and then, safe route, what, where, can you just, I noticed there's a park, but it's Hoyt School. So, where are people traveling on the safe routes, and, you know?
It, I don't want to, let me, let me clarify. There's a, there's a Safe Routes to School...
Right.
...which funds projects to get kids to schools and parks. There's a Safe Routes Grant that has nothing to do with schools and parks necessarily. It's used just as a way to incentivize the installation of sidewalk in areas like this.
Okay, thank, okay, yeah, great.
Aldo Arons?
Yes. Are there sidewalks on Chamberlain?
What you see, Alder, in the green dash...
Yeah.
...is the existing sidewalk on Chamberlain. And it would not be connected with this project to, to the other sidewalk network necessarily. I mean, it's, it's just out there by itself.
Yeah. But, I mean, is there, I see the part that says, "Existing sidewalk to remain", but what about the rest of that block?
It does not have sidewalk.
On either side?
And on either side. And we looked at putting sidewalk on that street, and it was, it was more problematic.
And is the same the case for Van Heist?
That is correct. Both of those streets proved difficult, and I can get into those reasons if you want.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I know it's a tangle. And Mason Street is, we're going to have sidewalk on one side?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Thanks. Just trying to clarify that.
All right, no one is on the queue. I will come to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion passes. So, now we're on item number six. We need a motion to recess public hearing and refer to common counsel for 10...
The adoption of number six, item 52870, 2019, effective January 2nd.
No, we're referring.
No, it's item number six.
Yeah.
Unless you want to take it out in somebody.
Oh, all right. So, it's mainly just to recess the public hearing and then refer to next counsel.
Refer to the common counsel meeting on October 2nd.
2nd, all right. Any comments on that? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no? All right, the motion passes. We are now on item number seven. Can I get a motion, please? You turn off your mic all the time, so I forget. All right.
It's got to be faster.
Yeah. Motion, and it's seconded. Any discussions? Comments? No? All right, we'll come to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion passes. Now we're on item number eight. Can I get the motion on eight, please?
Yes. Move adoption of item number eight. No...
All right, there you go. Item number eight, amending section 28 and section, section 28.053 and section 28.122 of the Marines General Ordinance to clarify sideyard, rear yard, maximum load coverage, and usable open space. Any discussions? Questions? No? All right, we'll come to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion passes. Now we go to item number 12, which is the video item.
Move...
Can I get a motion?
Move adoption of number 12, item 52498.
Okay, any second?
I can override the...
Yes. It's to override the video item 12.
Yes.
All right. So, we have one registrant wishing to speak and support this, and is Yang Yafel?
Hi, everyone. You have missed it?
Go ahead.
Good evening. I am speaking in behalf of the restaurant owner. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I have been here many times. I am already embarrassed because I've been here, but I have insisted to come here.
I have moved from California to Wisconsin to pursue my dreams of doing business and working hard. I am very proud of the fine food at my restaurant on State Street. It is very important that my customers are able to have a bit of wine or a beer, a drink of beer with their meal. I'm very careful to not to give them too much, as I know the danger of alcohol abuse. I would appreciate very much for your support approving for my wine and beer license by overriding the mirrors veto. Here, I want to say, say once again, I hope that you will contribute to my support for my business in this community and let me realize my dreams. I will try my very best to manage and maintain my business. And because I have more than 20 years business experience, I don't abuse...
I will, David.
I will never abuse alcohol. I promise you that. And I will maintain the business. Thank you again, and wish you a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next registrant supports and do not wish to speak is Steve. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Any comments, discussions on the item? No? All right, so we need 14 votes, so we'll, no, no, nobody is on? Oppose. Aldo Zellers, sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to say, this particular restaurant is in my district. I, I do not object to this alcohol license with the conditions that have been established on it, which are ceasing alcohol sales at 10 o'clock weekdays and 11 o'clock weekends, and it's beer and wine only. As a result, I really do not believe that it contributes to the problems that we have down in that area. So, I will be voting to override.
For the questions? No? All right, so we'll come to a vote, and the clerk will call the rules. All right, so we'll come to a vote, and the clerk will call the votes.
Aaron's?
Aye.
Arnson?
Aye.
Balti? Oh, you're up here. Vitar Sila?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Cheeks?
Aye.
Furman?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Harrington McKinney? Campbell, not voting. King?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Fair?
Aye.
Rumel?
Aye.
Skidmore excused. Tierney?
Aye.
Revere?
Aye.
Wood?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Yep, it passes.
How many? Okay, seventeen, yes, zero, no, so the motion passes, so it's overwritten. Thank you. So now we move to item 48. Can I get a motion? Aldo Silva, bida?
Yes, move adoption of item 48.
Aldo Silva, do you have anything to say? Please.
Did I get a second?
So you are ready?
All right. Basically, what I am standing before you today is a success story of the Wisconsin G.I. Bill. I came down here from Kekana, and back in September 6th, I believe, we witnessed an incident in Kekana where a young boy was killed. That's when I decided to become an American Legion service officer. I was able to work with the mayor. We, as a group, through the Tillman Mill, were able to reroute the maintenance program and create a more fluid traffic program. And this is when I started to understand the importance of us as veterans in this community, in every community, through the American Legion. So what I've done down here in Madison is, now that I've got my feet underneath me academically, the question was raised to me. Purdue University issued the question to academia, and that very simply is, "The archaeology of the homeless. What can we as scholars do for the 800,000 homeless in America?" And my response back is, "Turn them into scholars." We have 172 State Street veterans who are living in domiciles right now, because what I've done is I've walked down to State Street every Thursday and every Saturday, and I've handed out these 1-800-1-877-48 vet cards, along with the veteran suicide cards. I've showed these individuals how to use the PTSD coach. And what I'm asking out of this group is to consider, for some of these building materials, a possible coalition between the American Legion, the Veterans of Congress, who are backing this operation. It's called the 422nd Rescue and Recovery Program. What I am is an opiate survivor as well. 2008 to 2010, when I was in Port-au-Prince, I suffered a Riker Day concussion blast that threw me so far against the wall and knocked me out. I suffer from terminal brain injury, and I stand before you today with a 3.8 grade point average. That's how this program works at UW Health with the VA Mental Health Program. They take you through a journey, and they show you your stuck points. And when they introduce you to your stuck points, they give you an alternative thought. It is in that alternative thought I've been able to show that us veterans who are disabled can succeed. Last semester, I took five classes, and I built a business plan, which is the 501(c)(3) I present to you. I took basically six classes at Madison College last semester with PTSD. What I'm doing downtown in Madison on State Street is I'm utilizing my opportunity as a service officer. And as a service officer, it's my responsibility to look out for the homeless, disabled veterans, the elderly, the shut-ins. I get the job of going out and meeting with people. I get the job of being the voice of the post, and I also get the job of being the voice of the 22, because I am one of the 22. It is because of the veterans crisis line that led me to Middleton VA, where I was able to take the PTSD program called Cognitive Processing Therapy. It was there that I learned about stuck points and about how the VA Vital program works. So I've decided to run for Student Senate. This is my second week pledging. What I'm looking to do is enact a coalition. And this week, after I leave here, I'm going to take everything I've learned tonight, bring those minutes to the Department of the American Legion in Baraboo, and we're going to sit down with Commander Rohan, who has just been replaced, and we're going to create this mission downtown on State Street. What I'm asking for us, as members of this board, to take a look into is what I call the battle buddy benches. I had a chance in Kekana to do the bully benches. And what a bully bench is, is somebody who's been so belittled by the epithet for the way that they act and for the way that they are, and for how they see the world through the culture of two people, that they feel the need to commit suicide. Now, that's wrong. That is wrong as an American society, that we push people to the point of microaggressiveness, microassertiveness, and push them into a frame of mind where they need to get mental health evaluation. So what I've decided to do tonight was step up and say, first off, I'm here to report for the homeless downtown on State Street. 172 are signed up, but I've had to assist in resuscitating six veterans who lost their life. I've witnessed six veterans die on State Street. Myself, as a first responder through my previous job, I was able to assist the police. As you have all these open-air galas that we have, veterans are dying on State Street, and I'm here to tell you about that today. What it is, is that, are we intellects or are we scholars? When we walk through Library Mall, we see them camping there. Are we just going to turn a blind eye, shrug it off, and say, "Well, I'm an intellect. I've got a college education. I've got a degree." Or are we going to be scholars and fix the 800,000 people who are losing the battle today? And I know from my own personal perspective, that I've also gone over to Tellurium and surveyed the opportunity to serve them as well. I am in a 12-step program. I had to use that program to get off VA opiates. The VA cut me off at a blood pressure of 220 over 190. They cold-cut turkey me cut off right then and there and said, "You will no longer have any more VA opiates. You're done." So I sweat through 90 hours, 90 straight hours of detox, to get to where I am today. And so what I'm asking us here to do is enact a program, which is what I've started with my 501(c)(3). It's called the 422nd Rescue and Recovery Brigade. And every day at 422, I ask everybody to take a moment of silence and think about what those veterans have had to go through to get to where they are today, and that we clearly have a problem with our opiates. We clearly have a problem with homelessness, yet we're going to sit back here tonight and talk about building a new hotel. That's great. That's great business for this city, and it's great revenue, but here's what I've done. I've joined the NAACP. I've joined ONAC Church, which is the Native American Church, and I've created a Peace Corps Coalition. And what we're looking to do is create a habitat for humanity on native lands, and the opportunity for us to explore a new option here, and that is taking an opportunity to take people who are homeless and less fortunate and give them a chance to have skills and intern themselves back into society again. This is what the program is all about. What I'm asking for us to do is to possibly consider on State Street what are called battle buddy benches. And what that is, is that we all know, that we surveyed this going on downtown, but this is the opportunity for us to step forward in a new light and give our veterans an opportunity to declare themselves having an issue in public so that veterans like myself can sit down and coach them through this. What we're showing is a new segue program for our veterans in this community, and what we have is a great opportunity through a global-local reciprocity through Madison College VA Vital to seek out and find veterans who are homeless that could possibly become scholars like myself. So as I stand before you today, I just simply ask, let's take a look at the budget coming up, and let's see if we can possibly bring up a fundraiser, as I have adopted the DPI Building and the 400 block through the Adopt Block Program. And as I go forward, I'm going to bring these two blocks to the American Legion, and hopefully we can build a better segue for the people who come into our town and don't need a hotel. As long as they have Peace Park to come to, they should be all right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any quicks for him? Discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? Last item, Aldo King?
Second.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? We are joined. Thank you.